Be great. I'd like to call the November 5th meeting of the Buncombe County Commission meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for being with us. Between now and our next county commission meeting, our nation will recognize Veterans' Day on Monday, November 11th. This is the day our nation has set aside to recognize and honor all of the men and women who have served our country in the armed services. There will be a Veterans' Day ceremony at 11:00 a.m. at the Charles George VA Medical Center in Asheville. So I wanted to ask if we have the honor of having any veterans with us in the meeting this evening. I know we have one sitting right next to us, Commissioner Al Whitesides, and another gentleman who's with us as well, Commissioner Mike Friar as well. Any other folks who are with us as well? All right. Let's give all these folks a round of applause for their service. And, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think it was last week on Thursday, Waste Pro had a young man on the back of their truck, that somehow he ended up coming off and ended up getting killed. So we've had some problems with Waste Pro for the last little bit, and I think they're going to try to fix it. But the main thing concerned, we need to put our prayers there for this young man and his family that got killed. So that's our last.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner. Before we begin our meeting, I wanted to ask if we could have a moment of silence to recognize all the people who have served, all the men and women who have served our country. And let's also keep in prayers the family of the person who Commissioner Friar just mentioned, who died here in Buncombe County, 24 years old. So please have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Any matters that are voted on by the Board this evening. I do want to disclose that we are going to be voting on a solar RFP for public facilities this evening, and I do work in the solar business. The company I work for will not be involved in any bidding on any public contracts on that issue. But I did want to disclose that. All right. So we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Before we approve the consent agenda, I do want to make a note of which items we are planning to take public comment on this evening. We will have a general public comment period at the end of the meeting. There has also been a request for public comment on the solar RFP and the Waste Pro contract. And then again, we'll take general public comment as well on any other items at the end of the meeting. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sure.
Are you going to take public comment about the qualifications to the Waste Pro contract before you vote on the matter?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we are. Yep. Yes, sir.
I would like to ask the commission to consider doing something for the unfortunate Waste Pro employee, for his family, for I don't know what kind of expenses they might have, but I think it would be an appropriate gesture.
Okay. Thank you for your suggestion. We will be considering that. So, all right. Any other questions about the consent agenda from any members of the public? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
I assume so.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have several presentations. The first one is for adoption awareness, is the Adoption Awareness Proclamation, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to present this proclamation, and Stoney Blevins, our Health and Human Services Director, is here this evening as well. So Commissioner, do you want to read the proclamation from the podium?
Sure. I do believe some of the folks that are joining us are adoptive parents. So thank you for being with us this evening, and thank you for your service and taking care of our children. It says, "A proclamation of November as Adoption Awareness Month, whereas Adoption Awareness Month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home, and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive adulthood. And whereas in Buncombe County, there are 303 children and 30 young adults ages 18 to 21 in custody in Buncombe County. And whereas 48 children achieved permanency with their forever families through adoption from July 1, 2008 to June 30, 2019. And whereas there are currently 45 children in protective custody who are legally free for adoption and in need of a permanent home. And whereas during the month of November, Buncombe County Health and Human Services will continue to focus on children who need permanent adoptive families and honor families who have adopted children, as well as those who work to address the impacts of childhood trauma through safe and stable forever homes that meet the unique needs of children in foster care. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That the month of November 2019 be proclaimed Adoption Awareness Month in Buncombe County; That all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption and helping to focus attention on the need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this fifth day of November 2019 by the Board of Commissioners of Buncombe County."
Commissioners and members of the public, adoption is a very special thing for me personally and professionally, and there's a phrase in the Bible that said, "God sets the lonely in families." And whether or not you believe in the teachings of that book, there is something very comforting about the fact that a loving authority would take lonely people who have been disenfranchised and separated from family and place them in a forever family. And this really is what we do at Health and Human Services. We serve children through our authority. We do have authority. These are children who cannot live at home, who have been legally removed from their families and really are legal orphans. And we seek families who will love them and care for them and take them into their home and be their forever families. And so it's a very special day. Thank you so much for recognizing the work that we do, and I say "we," it's really "they." And so I did want to bring the folks up here with me that do this work every day, as well as we have some adoptive parents with us, especially want to recognize them. And so I do want to call them by name, and I'm going to read them because, in all honesty, I get my own children's names wrong, so it happens a lot. But we have Rebecca Smith, who is our social work director, and Sherry Thomas, who is our adoption manager, Susan Garland, who is the supervisor of the adoption unit, has been at this work a long time, very successful. We have Mary Jones and Jess Stewart and Liz Har, who are adoption specialists. And then we have Sarah Dees and Sharon Smith, who are here tonight as adoptive parents.
All right. Thank you all for your great work. All right. Thank you, Stoney. And I believe that you are actually up next as well for our next agenda item. We're going to have an overview about work on the Medicaid transformation efforts.
I think we should designate this HHS Night at the BOC. That's what I'd like to call it. Okay. So Medicaid transformation, I'm sure we've all been hearing a lot about transformation over the last several months. It's actually been a topic that's been around since 2015, and we just wanted to bring this to the attention of the Board and to the public tonight, primarily for the benefit of our citizens, although I'm having a little technical difficulty. It's all due. Help me. Yeah? So we want to cover three basic things, just the basic overview of North Carolina Medicaid for those who would not know, the impacts it will have on our citizen beneficiaries, and also the impacts that it will have on Buncombe County government. This is a basic timeline of Medicaid transformation. So as I mentioned, in 2015, this was enacted into law, which would take our Medicaid program from a fee-for-service program to a managed care program. The primary driver of that decision really was around cost containment. Medicaid costs were soaring in our state. They were unpredictable. They were causing lots of budget issues. So the initial design was to create a system that could contain and predict cost. Between 2015 and right around January of 2017, we actually got a new secretary, a new Health and Human Service Secretary, who was well-versed, she was a medical doctor, well-versed in things like social determinants of health, whole-person integrated care. And actually, the North Carolina Senate and the HHS Secretary really became enamored with the idea of a whole-person integrated approach in this managed care. And so I don't have a timeline, but that is a key thing to remember. Rolling up to today, health contracts were awarded in February of last year. In October of this year, open enrollment began for our citizens. If you move down to November 2019, you'll see contract negotiations. That's contract negotiations between the health insurance companies and medical providers, doctors, HHS, anybody that provides medical service under Medicaid. The open enrollment will end in December, and anyone who did not enroll, any citizen who did not enroll, will be auto-enrolled on December the 16th. We'll begin scheduling Medicaid transportation in January, and the launch will begin in February of 2020 statewide. Just to give you a little overview of the differences in the program, so the former Medicaid program is now called Medicaid Direct, and this is a fee-for-service program where you go to the doctor, like we would use our county insurance, and go to the doctor, the doctor bills the insurance a certain amount for that service, I may or may not have a copay. That's direct care. The managed care model is where North Carolina Medicaid is contracting with four prepaid health plans. These are large insurance companies who will receive a per-member-per-month rate for everyone that's enrolled in their plan, and then they will manage the medical care of the folks in there. So they'll do contracts with doctors and other providers, and then they will manage the financial benefit of that. As you see here on the beneficiary impact, we have roughly 48,000 citizens, residents in Buncombe County who receive Medicaid and use Medicaid as their insurance program. And that's something to think about. I try to say this every time I speak of Medicaid. It's really an insurance program, just like Medicare, just like Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, whatever you may have, it's an insurance program. So this change in service delivery will impact 65% of our 48,000-plus citizens who receive this insurance program as of February. The managed care model, as you can see, one thing I want citizens to realize is your services will remain whole. So this is not a reduction in benefit. So it will still cover anything that Medicaid covers today. It'll cover x-rays, it'll cover doctor's visits, it'll cover hospital visits, anything, the dentist, anything that Medicaid covers today will still be covered under the managed care model. You'll just be going through a company to get it rather than the state Medicaid office. One thing I would like to mention is these companies are offering what are called value-added services. Think of these as wellness benefits. It varies program by program, provider by provider, but things like weight management, smoking cessation, transportation to work, one company is offering school supplies. I mean, it really varies program to program, but these are things that they would consider social determinants that might keep a person well so that they don't have to go to the doctor. Enrollment. The first thing I would say to citizens is be sure when you enroll that you find your doctor first, because you don't want to enroll in a plan that your doctor has not signed a contract with, because managed care works on a medical home model. So your primary care physician will be sort of the gatekeeper of your health care. So I can't say it enough, go to that site or go to an enrollment broker, find your doctor before you look at what all the plans offer. After that, we need to choose a health plan. There's four options in our state, and you can look at, there's a document on that website that shows the benefits of each plan and what they offer, much like in an employment situation. You can often choose more than one plan. Some have different deductibles and things like that. This is the way that you can enroll. So you can go to the website, ncmedicaplanes.gov, you can use a mobile app, you can call toll-free, or you can also fill out an enrollment form, and our citizens should have gotten an enrollment packet in the mail in early to mid-October. This call center, want to make sure that folks have this number, and we're certainly putting this out on our website, social media, we have posters, we want our partners to get this out. But if you call this number, an enrollment broker will work with you to help you look at the benefits of the different plans and so that you can make a choice. I'd also like to make known that the enrollment broker, which is Maximus, it's a third-party broker, has staff on-site at our Cox Avenue location for Health and Human Services, so folks can actually come and meet with a person if they want to. And also, if people don't have access to a computer, we have a designated computer station in our lobby off to the side where you can sit and access this website, and someone can help you navigate it. These are the four health plans: AmeriHealth Caritas, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, operating as Healthy Blue, United Healthcare of North Carolina, and WellCare of North Carolina. These are websites that, this will be on, I understand, on our website, so folks can go here and link to these sites. Some of these explain enrollment, some of them explain the transformation in general. Also, for providers can go on there and see what the transformation will mean for them. Our communication plan, when the packets went out, we did a robocall to all Medicaid recipients in Buncombe County, just letting them know that the packets were coming, explaining as best we could what it would be. It's a very large packet, can be a little bit confusing. We're doing the old-school handouts, posters, articles, social media. We're also scheduling some community meetings, which I don't know that we have on there, but we have one meeting at Cox at our downtown location, and then we will be having a meeting in, Inca will be having a meeting in Weaverville, we have a meeting in Black Mountain. So we're trying to get across, out into the community, so folks won't have to travel into downtown to meet with an enrollment broker. And at those meetings, we'll have representatives of the health plans there to explain their plans, as well as the enrollment broker will be on-site, so they could help you sign up, you know, while you're at the event. When we look at program impact for the county, it really impacts us in four major departments or areas: our Economic Services Division at HHS, Public Health, Mountain Mobility, our transportation provider, and also emergency services in the way of ambulance service. In Economic Services, primarily, I do want to make this clear to citizens, Medicaid transformation does not impact the eligibility process. So how you are determined to receive Medicaid does not change. If you want to apply for Medicaid, you are free to come into our office as you always have. If you need to redetermine your eligibility, you can mail an app, you can do it online. So we want to make clear that folks know that how you receive the benefit has not changed, just how you will receive your services is what will change. We also are responsible to administer what we call non-emergency medical transportation, so this is trips to the doctor, the dentist, mental health provider, that are not emergency in nature, so think of anything besides an ambulance ride. We currently do this through a contract with Land of Sky Regional Council, and citizens call there. Land of Sky arranges their medical trip for them and also manages contracts with all the transportation vendors in the county. As of February 1st, that 65% that we were talking about that go into managed care will have to call their prepaid health plan to get their ride to the doctor. So if they choose Healthy Blue, they'll call Healthy Blue to get a ride to the doctor, no longer Land of Sky. Of course, we still will be responsible to provide transportation to that 35% of beneficiaries, which, as you can see, is 21, almost 22,000 people, and that doesn't line up with the 35%. Folks who will receive Medicaid Direct are a little more likely to need transportation than some of our other populations. So we have continued to work with Land of Sky, and they're willing to continue to provide transportation on our behalf. We feel like this is a good business move, as well as a good customer service move for continuity of service, and this way, some folks won't have to transition to a new provider. In Public Health, I would say that impacts public health a lot like it impacts every other medical provider in the community. We'll be signing contracts with these four large insurance companies, just like doctors will, or Mission HCA, or MAHEC. As you can see, though, of these services that we provide, primary care providers are much less likely to provide some of these services. Nurse Family Partnership and Care Management, of course, are Medicaid programs aimed at mothers with very young children or pregnant mothers, and this is a service that we provide pretty much exclusively. I guess we'll see whether private providers will really get more into the family planning or immunization business, which obviously is a big part of core service of public health. We do want to make this clear, if someone has Medicaid and they're in managed care, they still can come to public health for services. You know, we are a public entity, safety net provider. We don't turn anyone away because of their insurability. So we wouldn't want someone to feel like, because they're now in managed care and they're receiving benefits through one of those companies that they couldn't bring their children in for an immunization. We would want you to bring them on in, and we will serve you. Okay. Now we're moving to the transportation section, and I'm going to hand it over to Matt.
All right. And I just have two quick slides. We are in a very similar situation as public health, in that we'll be a contracted provider going forward for NEMT medical transportation services. So we're a provider, along with other private entities in Buncombe County for that service. To give you some perspective, about 6% of our service mileage, which is how we actually account for our costing, are attributed to NEMT clients and the trips that they take, and those are FY '19 figures, and projected to be about the same for FY 2020. And as I mentioned, so we are currently a provider. We work with the broker that the county has designated for Medicaid recipients, that being Land of Sky, and we are selected from a pool of eligible providers, and that's based on our costing and our contract rates. So we're one of many providers. So currently, we have the one contract with Land of Sky, and they reach out to Mountain Mobility to schedule appointments. And after February 1st, we anticipate as many as five potential contracts. So each insurance company has a broker, and we would have to contract with each broker to continue to be that provider of transportation. And so we are actively working with the brokers. We've received contract draft documents from each of them, and we'll be working to negotiate out rates and other aspects of contracting so that we can continue to be a provider for the citizens that use Medicaid transportation going forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt Evans.
So your title slide promised you an emergency services rep. I'm not in emergency services, I'm in finance. I was in a meeting once where we talked about this. Had I known I'd been up here tonight, I would have drank some stronger coffee that morning. But I do think, they put the slides together, but I think I know where they're trying to go. I want to back up a little bit in the lens of the ambulance services that the county provides. We have four patient types: Medicare, Medicaid, insurance, and direct bill. Our Medicare and our Medicaid, as far as billing go, offer over 90% payback. So the slide that you see here, 16% is the calendar year 2018 data. 16% of our emergency services calls were Medicaid. So it's not a lot. And then if we were to look at FY 2019 and kind of extend that out six months, it was 14%. So we're talking, you know, 2,700 folks. And then as we talk about non-emergency trips, we're looking at 14 a year, you know, 16 to 14 a year. As Stoney and Matt both mentioned, we work, emergency services works with a consulting group called EMSMC. They are currently working on negotiations with those four PHPs that you heard about. And I think the big takeaway is here is the service is still going to be there, everything is going to go status quo. Folks are just going to need to run through those PHPs to make sure they get the service that they need. If they're non-emergent, if they need non-emergent transport, they're going to need to go through a broker. We're currently working with that as well, to make sure that we're on the list for those non-emergency transports. Otherwise, there's a lot of admin stuff that we have to do on the back end. I don't see a huge financial impact from this. I think it's going to be pretty status quo. We might see a little bit more of our non-emergent medical transports, but that's it.
One other aspect of Medicaid transformation that I did not mention, because I have colleagues here who can speak to it much better than I can, is one year after the implementation of the managed care plans, tailored plans will be implemented, and this will greatly affect our beneficiaries who receive behavioral health services, and also will have some impact on our LME MCO via health. So we have also invited them to give a brief update on what that might mean in terms of
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and the public. My name is Christina DePush, and I'm the Chief of Community Operations for VIA Health. And I have my colleague with me this evening, Angie Gardner, who is your liaison to this community, to this county and community, and several other counties for us. So thank you so much, Stoney, for giving us a few minutes. I won't take up much of your time. So Stoney, I think, and the staff have done a great job in kind of setting up what's going on currently right now. For VIA Health, of course, we're seeing the separation of consumers and families that we have served previously historically in our system that are moving to the commercial world of the prepaid health plans. We are, since 2014, we have been preparing for the day that the system would move to this next phase of Medicaid transformation that is referenced as the tailored plan. And as Stoney was mentioning, this is really the most chronic, persistent mentally ill, people who have behavioral health issues, substance issues, and individuals who have intellectual development disabilities. In that Senate bill that was passed, or the General Assembly passed back several years ago, there was a lot of question about what was the role of the LME MCOs via health. VIA is one of the seven LME MCOs across North Carolina. You probably have some history. We were typically Smoky Mountain. The organization's been around for about 50 years. So we have been preparing, this is a huge lift. Currently today, as probably many of you know, we have been responsible for the behavioral health and health and IDD services for these individuals. We have not been managing on the Medicaid side the healthcare cost. So what we are hearing, what we continue to hear, is that the RFP from the Department of Health and Human Services will be issued hopefully around February, depending on what we see the General Assembly does in the next couple of weeks and any action they may take or not take. If that date holds true, then in February, there would be an RFP issued. As the, as the law, the statute states today, the LME MCOs like Via Health would be the only agencies eligible to apply for that RFP. And of course, that would be a very competitive bid. The legislation, there's seven today, the legislation says that there could be five to seven chosen. So they've left the door open if we would all survive or not, to be very honest. And so what we are doing internally today with our communities, with groups of people, this Commissioner Board and other ones, we represent 22 counties in western North Carolina. We have a privilege to manage the Medicaid, and also we represent the people who are unfunded, who many of our communities really struggle with today. So we are preparing internally to, you know, we are ramping up to become, you know, experts in healthcare. We have, we have, you know, more primary care physicians, we have pharmacists, we've hired nurses, clinicians. So this is a huge lift. But I think that the vision that the Department of Health and Human Services in conjunction with the General Assembly has laid out for North Carolinians who are in these situations is really the whole concept of integrated care and whole person care, which I think all of us, just as citizens, is the type of healthcare I want, the type of healthcare we all desire in our lives. And I think, I have been in the system over 40 years, and I would say this is the closest. It's kind of the ultimate Medicaid transformation. It is very complicated, it is very controversial, and I think all of us, you know, we can spend the rest of the evening talking about that where we want. But I think what we would like for you to know tonight, that you have Via Health, who represents many of the citizens and works very closely with your departments here in the county and across western North Carolina to walk hand in hand. We continue to build very strong relationships with the four PHPs. We really have five, because Alexander County, which is one of our counties east of here that you're probably familiar with, there is another, it was a provider-led entity that was chosen, really another PHP. It's a little different animal, but they just had an expansion of their coverage. And so for Via, we, one of our counties will have, the consumers and the families will have a choice of five PHPs to choose from in that one particular county. But this sort of is a side note. But we really continue to move forward internally, externally, to hire the expertise, to move the system forward, to be prepared. We would manage all the Medicaid healthcare for individuals other than dentistry. Dentistry was carved out of this particular decision at this point in time. So I would stop there and see if you had any questions or comments that want to take away from Stoney and what you may want to ask him, but thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions at this time? All right, don't see any at this time. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
All right, Stoney, any, any, any other info on this that we need to know? Or does that conclude this presentation?
We're also finished. Any questions you have, we'd be glad to answer them.
I don't see any at this time, but that was a lot of great information. So thank you very much for, for this great update. Okay, next up, we have the quarterly financial report from Don Warren.
All right. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I wanted to quickly run through the first quarter, quarterly financial report. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You were looking at me funny.
Nope. Coming through loud and clear.
Excellent. All right, so this is first quarter. We're going to run through the general fund budget to actual summary, expense revenues, and then the solid waste fund. For the general fund, we're at 11.9% of budget. Now, I know we are a quarter of the way through the year, but due to the timing of revenues and expenditures, we're not necessarily going to be at 25% of revenues collected. As far as total budget, we are 335 million point, and we have year-to-date collections of 39.8. As you can see, most categories are pretty close to where they were at this time last year. Now, when we talk about revenues, property tax, the majority of property tax is collected in November through January. And then sales tax, you'll notice there is nothing recorded for local option sales tax, and that's due to the lag time from the time the transaction occurs until the state actually pays us, which is about three months. We look at expenditures for the general fund by function, and this is what we budget at. We're at 20% of budget expended. Total budget, 335 million, total actual is 67. Compared to last year, we're just total, in total, we're slightly above about 0.59%. If we look at it from, by category, which is our salaries and benefits, operating expenditures, we're trending pretty well on salaries and benefits at this point. Program is just a little bit higher than last year. And then we have transfers and other financing. So we have done some transfers already this year, which we had not done the prior year. Looking at the solid waste fund, total budget is 9.6 million. Total revenues collected to date is 2.9 million for 30.9% of budget. Compared to 2019, fiscal year 2019, we are above revenues by 29.6%. So we are doing really well. Talking with Dane, the transfer station is doing really well. So now that that's fully online and operational, it's, it's really collecting the revenues. Looking at expenditures, 9.6 million budgeted, 1.2 million actual expenditures, or 13.2%. And this is totally driven by salaries, benefits, operating expenditures. Now, as far as first quarter, I know it's not very exciting because there's not a whole lot going on yet. We're going to continue to monitor it. If anything were to jump out at us, it would be of concern, then we would bring it to your attention. But otherwise, we'll just come back for the second quarter report. Be happy to answer any questions. If you have any. All right.
All right, thank you so much, Don. Appreciate it. Okay, next up is the public hearing on the SADA rezoning request, and we will take, there will be a public hearing, and we'll take public comment during the public hearing on this.
Yes, sir.
The SADA rezoning request.
All right, good evening. Hope you all are doing well. If you could pull up the presentation, please. There we go. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. What I'd like to do is give you a brief presentation on the SADA zoning map amendment request. First, let me state for the record that this public hearing was noticed properly in accordance with the North County general statutes and Buncombe County code, details of which are on the slide. The applicant tonight is Mr. Terry Peterson. The property owners are Mary Ann and John Sada. The address for the property in question is 2586 and 2592 Hendersonville Road, or US Highway 25 South. This is just north of the Henderson County line on 25. Some basic property information, the subject property is .8 acres in size, currently used for mixed-use retail. It is serviceable by public water and wastewater on site. The request is to rezone the property from its current zoning of R2 residential to commercial Some basic comparative between the two districts. R2 is a standard, single-family residential, medium-density zoning district, allows a broad range of residential-type uses and some very limited office and institutional-type uses, whereas CS, commercial services, is a fairly intensive commercial zoning district. It does allow residential uses, but its primary purpose is for a variety of types of commercial office business, light institutional, and some very light manufacturing-type uses. Basic comparison from a geometric perspective of the two districts, they're almost identical in terms of minimum lot sizes, setbacks, things like that. The key difference really is in the range of allowable uses. I don't have a slide, but in your staff report on Attachment A, which is in your packet, you do have a comparison side by side of the two districts. Some basic typical uses that you would find in CS that are not allowable in R2 residential, restaurants, medical clinics, vet clinics, professional offices, business offices, things like that, those are not allowable today in R2, not allowable on the subject property. If the rezoning is approved, they would become allowable under commercial services. Some views of the property from different perspectives. This is facing north, facing east, facing west, and facing south. Land use plan analysis, for the public's benefit, staff, the planning board, and the Board of Commissioners typically will look to the land use plan as a guiding document as to how we consider and evaluate rezoning requests. This particular application is consistent with every variable in your land use plan. It's approximate to major transportation corridors, served by water and sewer, it's not in a flood plain, it's not on a steep slope, and it's not, it's not approximate to low-density residential uses. Therefore, from staff's perspective and the planning board as well, this would be consistent with neighborhood character and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Recommendations, the planning board on October 7th recommended approval by an eight to zero vote unanimous. Staff concurs and also recommends approval, and be happy to take any questions.
All right, I do not see any questions at this time, so let's open the public hearing on this item. I'll open the public hearing at 5:43. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposal? Yes, sir. Yep, yeah, please come up to the podium and let us know your name, and you'll have three minutes to comment, and you'll get an orange light when you've got, I think, 30 seconds, and then when the red light goes off, your time's up, and please, please respect the time, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time.
I'll try and make it brief. My name is Terry Peterson. I'm a commercial real estate broker with Beverly Hanks. I have this property listed for sale, and we certainly have complications of trying to market it with the current zoning. It's been zoned R2 somewhat forever. It has been operated as a commercial parcel for over 65 years. Most all of the neighboring properties are zoned commercial service. So the idea is to merely try and blend this in with what everything else is. It's on a commercial corridor, obviously. On the flip side, R2, single-family residential, this property has a market value well in excess of $400,000. There is no way someone's going to buy that lot and build a single-family home on it right on Hendersonville Road. So I see two minutes. I'll wrap it up. I appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:45 PM.
So I'm going to make a motion to find that the request is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan, reasonable in the public interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So now we've got to do a second one that's just to move approval.
To adopt the ordinance.
So make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in second to rezone the property as outlined in the staff report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Josh. Okay, we'll come to the county manager's report. Ms. Pender, do you have any items? All right, very good. Okay, first item under, first and only item under Old Business is a discussion about the guidelines for funding of nonprofit agencies, which we talked about at our last meeting, and Rachel Nygaard is here to present this item. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I understand this is good, but we have people in the audience that are looking, you know, down here at Waste Pro, and it keeps getting dumped to the bottom. Can't we move some of this stuff up so these people can speak on this so that we...
I think we've, we've already agreed to follow the agenda as published, so I recommend we just exercise discipline and try to carry out our business in an efficient way. So we're going to stay on the, stay on the schedule as we discussed earlier. Hi, Rachel.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Nygaard, and I'm the Strategic Partnerships Director for Buncombe County. I'm back with you this evening. The last time we discussed this item was October 15th in your last regular meeting, and this is an item related to guidelines for funding of nonprofit organizations. And there will be two parts to this conversation. The first piece that we're going to spend some time on is to look at an updated process for the strategic partnership grants process. The second piece, which we'll get to in a little bit, has to do with overall resolution establishing guidelines for any grants within countywide. So before I begin, I wanted to make a note about the strategic partnership grants. There has been a little bit of confusion because Buncombe County does have a number of different grant processes. So to be clear, this conversation is about the eligibility and process and recommendations for strategic partnership grants. If you go to buncombecounty.org/grants, there's a list of many different grant programs that are administered through the county. A lot of it is general county funds, and some of it is passed through from state or other federal funds. So the Affordable Housing Program, the Aging Services Funds, Community Recreation Grants, Isaac Coleman Grants, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, or JCPC, Tipping Point Grants, et cetera. Those are all outside of the scope of this first, first conversation. After discussion during the last meeting, when Commissioner Edwards and I presented information and there was conversation among the Board of Commissioners, we bring forward the following recommendations. These are categorized by section, so the first recommendation being around timeline. This is not a change. This would be opening the applications in December and having them be due in February. That would be our typical annual cycle. The new piece is to be more strict in adhering to no, no late applications so that we can stay on timeframe. And that funding would stay aligned to the fiscal year so that the, the decision-making process happens after the grant applications are due in February, and then funding begins July 1 and follows the fiscal year. The second category of recommendations is budget. The recommendation is to confirm the funding prior to opening up the grant process based on looking at the prior year funding. And an item that was added in response to your conversation on October 15th was to, prior to opening the grant process, if there's a desire from the Board of Commissioners, we could earmark a portion of that funding for specific goals. I'll get through these recommendations, and we can come back to any that you have questions about. Community centers was the example that was brought up last time. What if we wanted to have a portion, a percent or a dollar amount of the total for community centers?
So I'm the one that brought that up, and what was interesting, I got a call today on my home phone. Are you Commissioner Boucher that represents our area in the Beaver Dam area? And they were asking about community center. And so some of that will come through us, some of it will come through you guys, through your, your department, but, so I'm glad to see you're addressing that.
Well, if we go down this path, there'll be a limited opportunity to have input on that, and then once that's done, then it will all be funded through the strategic partnership. We won't have a role in that, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Well, I'll always, if I'm an elected official and somebody calls me on my home and they're advocating for something, I'm always going to have a voice in that.
Well, that is what this whole recommendation is about, is that the funding recommendations would be coming through this process. So, I mean, let's, I mean, I'm just glad we're surfacing it, because that is exactly what this process is about, is that it would not be a commissioner-initiated nonprofit funding process, right?
There will be a slide in a few minutes that talks about the process for recommending, which speaks to an option to have a committee.
So I don't have authority to approve anything, but, you know, the board does. But, you know, as a, as a person that represents our district, if somebody brings a need to me, then I'll bring it to you, or I'll bring it to them, or I'll bring it to the county manager, or anybody and have, surely have input.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have final approval, right? We do.
Right, but we're going to approve a budget. I mean, let's get through this, but we're going to have this discussion, but there'll be a pool of money. I think we decide how much money it is, and there'll be a set of recommendations that come from this Citizens Committee and staff. And, 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 yeah, we could change them, but, you know, I mean, I hope that we would take the recommendations pretty seriously, so.
... that's what we're...
All right, let's, let her finish the presentation, then we'll talk about all this stuff.
I can't wait to put the committee slide up. First, we'll get back, I did timeline, I did budget. Projects, the recommendations here are to align the grants to the new strategic plan rather than to what we've aligned to previous, which is the strategic priority... rather than to what we've aligned to previous, which is the strategic priorities and sustainability plan. We are aware that this year is a transition year, and we may not have a fully built-out strategic plan when the grant process opens, and so we would go with what we know at that time. And if focus areas is what we have so far, then we would align to focus areas rather than specific goals. There's been the addition, and I understand there is some conversation in the pre-meeting today about the second bullet, which is a desire from the board of commissioners to see that there is equitable or balance between funding across commissioner districts. And there are multiple ways that this could be achieved. If we get the directive to do this, we would look at things such as where a group is physically located, the residency of the people who receive services from that group, as well as looking at maybe the number of projects, the total amount of funding, so that what we're bringing forward as a recommended portfolio is, is balanced and represents funding in, in an equitable way or a balanced way across districts. The third bullet there is really a matter of housekeeping, but just bringing to light that we would include in our grant process, a specific step to have legal review conducted so that our attorneys are signing off that the projects all fall within the scope of what we can fund as a local government. Eligibility, there, these are some changes. The recommendation would be to limit funding to organizations that have been in active operation for a minimum of two years, to limit funding to no more than three years for a single project, and to limit funding to less than 30% of an annual agency budget. Grant awards is the next category. This is not a change from current practice. Performance contracts would be established after the grants, grant awards are made. Those contracts would include a scope of work and individual, individual measures that those organizations track and report back on. The contract monitoring would occur, and there would be a performance dashboard, which, by the way, is published in Live for the FY '20, the year that we're in. The first quarter of work has been completed, and the, the 25 or so grantees that are in this particular grant program have submitted their reports, and that information is published on buncombecounty.org/grants. This is the recommendation related to a committee. If this is pursued, the recommendation is to have a nine-member committee. Three-year staggered terms. That committee would be appointed by the board of commissioners. Would include representation from each of the three districts, three per district, and would include representation that's inclusive of all of the focus areas within the Buncombe County strategic plan. We would have well-established conflict of interest policies, and this body, as, as envisioned in this recommendation, would be the group that reviews all of the grant applications and recommends funding, similar to the way that the Aging Services Program has the allocations committee, or similar to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Committee, where it comes to the board of commissioners as a full slate of recommended The process that we would follow would be consistent with what other grant processes, like early childhood or any of these others, where there would be a published online application form that currently occurs. The committee would hold its meetings in a, in a open and public way. That has been something that we have been doing with the Early Childhood Committee and have a, a good model to follow, if you'd like to have that implemented, and using best practices for scoring and recommending grants. We talked about these last time, so I won't go into a ton of detail, but there was some brainstorming that has been done around what the criteria could be that that committee would look at in scoring and recommending grants. What is on the screen is a potential motion that's divided into two sections. We are, we are aware as staff that there may be some pieces that you want to approve that are committee, that include the committee or don't include the committee, and so I was asked to split this so that you could look at it as, do we like the timeline, budget, projects, eligibility pieces, do we like the committee pieces? I'm happy to stop providing information now and pause while you have your discussion, and if you would like any certain slides called up, just let me know.
All right, thank you, Rachel.
I'd like to start just by saying thank you to the folks who've worked on this. It's a lot of heavy lifting and feels like it's really pointing us in a exciting new direction in terms of how we approach this. I, I like a tremendous amount about this proposal. I did have one very kind of specific question on the eligibility in terms of requiring that nonprofits have been in active operation for a minimum of two years. Just wanted to drill down there, and if an organization could document that they've been operational and, but they had C-3 status through a fiscal sponsor, would that still be considered a form of eligibility, or is it saying an organization have to have sort of its own C-3 status for two years?
My understanding is that we would continue to allow fiscal sponsor relationships. We do have at least one organization in our currently funded portfolio. That's the Asheville-Buncombe Food Policy Council. That doesn't have a standalone 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, has partnered with one in order to have a mechanism to receive grant funds.
Okay, great, thank you. And then just kind of to tee off a conversation, building a bit on the conversation from pre-meeting, it, it feels like we're close-ish to the, that, that balanced portfolio across districts, but I wonder if we could maybe refine the language there a bit, or, and it sounded like maybe staff had some different ideas about how, how that could be approached, whether it was assessing the mission of the organization, serving the whole community, or where constituents lived, or where the org was based. So I would certainly want to hear some specific recommendations around that, and, and would want there to be some, some structure provided, but also enough, I think flexibility so that the committee could be responsive to, say, emergent issues showing up in the county that might be impacting, say, one district or community particularly hard at, at a given time. So just wanted to sort of float that as we, as we embark on our conversation.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I mean, I think that, if not the whole weight of it, I think the most important weight should be given to the, you know, where are the programs and services being in the constituency, you know, the people benefiting from it is way more important than where is the street address of the organization located? I mean, just to use kind of a few examples, and I honestly actually don't know where this organization's offices, but you think about like Appalachian Sustainable Agriculture, they might have an office in Asheville, but their mission is all about protecting farmland and supporting farmers, which would probably be overwhelmingly in the rural parts of the county, or a land trust organization that might have, you know, so there's different organizations that might be located in Asheville, but their services are all about maybe the more rural communities in Buncombe County, and that seems more important than just where your office is, is located to, to me.
I think when we were initially looking at this, we were really looking at the broader scope of the service area, that it wasn't necessarily the address of where the organization was located, but where were their services reaching, just beyond a specific neighborhood, into more rural areas of the county? So definitely that broader scope of where their services are provided, or where those constituents and clients live.
Other comments or questions from commissioners or a motion?
You know, I've got a, go back a couple of slides. It was fourth bullet point where you had the strategic, you had environment, you had vibrant economy, you had four, which I don't know that we've finalized those yet. Can you pull that slide up, somebody? There it is, okay. So...
I placed those four bullets in. They have been affirmed as sort of the, the general categories or focus areas for the county's strategic plan. That's not a strategic plan that has been adopted at this point, so acknowledging we are in a bit of a transition, and should those focus areas adjust, we would certainly want the committee to adjust accordingly.
So are you saying that there's going to be four, a minimum of four representatives from each of those areas in the nine-member committee?
There are different ways that it could work. We didn't want to be overly restrictive and say this many seats per each one, but as long as we have professionals that are representing expertise across all four focus areas, we could become more prescribed about that, if that were to feel more comfortable for the board of commissioners.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're representing everybody in Buncombe County, whether it be a farm owner in Lester, or a, you know, a solar farmer, solar, you know, operator in Black Mountain, whatever. I just want to make sure that we're doing that, so. I see that bullet point as being a, a little bit of a living document, you know, just because you work in a particular area. I don't know that that would necessarily qualify you to be on that committee, so I see that, maybe more discussion on that. Because we get a little bit of everything in those requests.
It's broad.
It is broad. I mean, we used to talk about, you know, ASAP, ASAP, you know, we, is for funding of farm tour, right? I mean, you know, ASAP's goals, as the chairman said, you know, they have those goals, but it's not a, it's not a big amount that we fund. I don't, I'm not remembering a large amount, like $5,000, but it's for a, for farm tours. Some are out where I live, and they're all over the county, so. That's a reasonable, you know, comment, I think, and, so I just have a little bit of concern about, you know, making sure that people on the committee come from here, 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 and here, you know, with that expertise, because there's a lot of people that know a lot of things about, you know what I mean? I mean, they're not just one particular expert, and they can represent their community very, very well, you know?
I think that's a great point, and I think that is certainly something that could be addressed in the committee application, as we are requesting volunteers to serve on that. We could, I think the staff could certainly dig in and look at arranging the application that way, and then that onus of selecting those volunteers will serve on, will fall to us to choose them. So I think we can have some input on that application to address those, those concerns, Commissioner Boucher.
I mean, I, you know, and, thank you, Commissioner. I think that the, to me, the goal of this, one of the goals, is to provide, you know, equity across the county in, not only in the funding part, but in the requesting of those funds, just to make sure that, you know, that people know what's available and And, and I'm not, you know, the commissioners will always have input, and Commissioner White said, "We have the final vote," which is true, but, I mean, you know, my conversation earlier, when I, you know, when I, when I go to Ingalls, I promise you, people are going to tell me what we ought to be spending our money on. That's just the way it works. If you're an elected official, and you're at the gas station, and you run into somebody you know, or they'll call you at the house, and they will let you know what we should be spending our money on. And it's not, and, and you need to listen to them, and so I just want to make sure that, that's, that's, that's built into the, built into the process. I'm not talking about, you know, necessarily my, my input, because, you know, if, if you're an elected official and you have approval, then you have an opportunity to give input. But as far as the, you know, the rules, we just need to, I appreciate y'all tackling this. I mean, nobody's been willing to tackle it, so.
I think, I think what you've done is good. I mean, we, sure, we probably have to tweak it some, but it's going to be critical when you look at the expense and everything that we're putting in the strategic plan, we've got to make sure we follow it. And I think to have one person on that from, you know, representing the different areas who would be an expert, you know, would be good to have. The advantage, though, of this community is, and I know where you're coming from, Commissioner Boucher, is we have a lot of experts in different areas, and they will tell you so, too. But I think, and a lot of them are right, too. I won't disagree with that, but I think it's critical, though, that in setting this up, that we have the right seats taken on the bus, because if we don't, it'll be so easy for this report to get off track. And in doing that, we got to. And the other thing is, too, when we look at most of your larger organizations in the community, I can name a few, because I've been on several boards, but they take care of every nook and cranny in the county. But I don't want to see the small organizations who might be working just in one area to prove conditions in Broad River being left out. And I think we can do that, you know, within this, from what I, you know, read, we can do that. But I think that's going to be the key to make sure that, you know, we do take care of everybody. And I agree with what Jasmine said, too. You know, we'll have a lot of startup organizations, people with some good ideas, and it will be needed, you know, so we need to look at that, too. But I like what I see in them, I'll vote for it.
I'd like to request public comment on this. It would require another commissioner to join me in that, to open it up, to see if there's folks who'd want to share their perspective.
I'll join on that, Jasmine. Thanks.
Okay, I think technically it requires three for old business, although, I mean, we did talk about this at a pre-session, but it is the first time we're talking about it at a meeting, so, but regardless, I'll support it, too, so we'll do that. But why don't, before we do that, I, I do think usually we have a motion made. Does somebody want to take, make a motion on this?
Got some more questions?
Well, let's do some more, let's have some more questions and discussion. We will take public comment on this, but I just, I think it'd be good for people to have a sense for where this is going when they are commenting.
So are you separating the committee from the policy and the vote?
There was no motion on the table yet. It sounds like it could be done that way, or it could just be all approved.
Oh, she has A and B.
I'm sorry, what, Rachel?
I don't think the committee's in the resolution.
Oh, so the, okay, so passing the resolution doesn't...
Passing the resolution is separate, and I'll explain that these changes to the strategic partnership grants are not dependent on what happens with that resolution. Do you want me to cover that first?
So the resolution has nine, five or six wheresses, but nine points, right?
Would it be helpful for me to go through that component of the presentation now?
It doesn't.
Doesn't establish.
Okay, so.
That's separate.
It's establishing the criteria.
To summarize...
For countywide funding of nonprofits, not just strategic priorities.
The resolution, yes, the resolution updates the guidance that staff can look to in terms of how to operate our grant programs in a way that is standard across the county. It says that all grant programs must have a clear process that's published, that includes conflict of interest guidelines, et cetera, but it doesn't say what that process should be for any one of the specific grant programs.
So when do we want to discuss some of the parts of the resolution? When do we want to do that? Want to do it before a motion or after?
Well, and, and related, so if we also want to take action regarding the strategic pri, the strategic priority grants funding tonight, how exactly do we do that?
It might be helpful for me to go through the rest of the presentation.
Okay, let's do, let's do that, and then we'll continue.
Oh, you have more, okay.
As a reminder, this was the first slide that we saw. There were two parts to our conversation. The first part was about strategic partnership grants specifically. The second part is a countywide resolution on overall funding of nonprofits. To recap what we talked about in the last, last time we got together on this topic, on October 15th, the reason for this need is that the current resolution that's in place is, is inconsistent and difficult to implement as written. So this gives us, as staff, a set of standards that we can follow across departments, whether we're talking about the community recreation grants, the affordable housing grants, or the strategic partnership grants. The resolution, text of the resolution is pasted here into the slides. I won't read it word for word, but I'll talk through the different parts. Resolutions begin with the wheresses, and so this establishes and acknowledges that the county does have multiple grant programs for providing public funds. the county does have multiple grant programs for providing public funds. That was something that was confusing in the previous resolution, so we wanted it to be clear in this resolution. It acknowledges the nature of public funds. It refers to the previous resolution, which is included in your packet and published online. It establishes that this new resolution will supersede the previous. And the now therefor's are the items that you were referring to a moment ago, Commissioner Belcher. We define for the purpose of the resolution what a nonprofit agency is.
Can you back up one second, please?
Yes.
So what was, for those that are not in the, the nonprofit world and understand some of the, oh, Jasmine, Commissioner, what were you referring to when you were talking about 501(c)(3) with, versus the other?
Sure, just wanted to clarify that an organization that conducts its work as a nonprofit but doesn't have its own official 501(c)(3) designation from the IRS could be eligible to receive funds through a fiscal sponsor, which would be a nonprofit that does have its 501(c)(3) designation and could basically, it's sort of a very commonly used process to direct, to getting funds.
And not all, not all nonprofit designations are 501(c)(3). There's more than one type. There's an association of churches, et cetera.
Sorry, I'm familiar with (c)(3) first.
Continue.
Yep.
This is item number two that I was referring to a moment ago. That's the process that we're in the middle of for strategic partnership grants, defining what the process will be for that grant program, but acknowledging that for any grant program, we'll have a published process that is well-defined, accountable, and includes conflict of interest procedures.
So do you see that, that item number two coming back to us as to what a published, well-defined, accountable process is? Because it's not part of the resolution.
It, not necessarily. The Board of Commissioners is deciding it for the strategic partnership grants, which has previously sat with the board. For the example of, like, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, that process is written into state statute, and so it's already included. Affordable Housing Committee comes to the Board of Commissioners before the Affordable Housing Services Program opens up and brings what that process is going to be, and then publishes it on a different cycle. So each grant program would have a slightly different method for establishing what that process is.
And so that's going to be very clear to the public, very clear to us as to what that is?
I hope so.
Me, too.
That is what we're saying here, that every program we have will have a process that the public can understand and that you would also know.
Yeah.
I think all the other ones have, already do that. This is the one area where we have the opportunity to increase the clarity.
Yes.
Okay.
Of all of the grant programs that I've mentioned this evening, strategic partnership grants is the one that has the least clear process, and what we're trying to do is formalize that with, with the first half of our presentation tonight. So the resolution continues. The process will have eligibility criteria. Number four, states that all grants will be administered as contracts. That is almost all true. One, one of our grant programs is still doing an award letter, but they're ready to move to a, a performance contract for the, for community recreation grants, and we've got a plan in place to be consistent across all departments so that we have equitable treatment of nonprofits receiving grant funds. We already have processes in place for ongoing monitoring and evaluation, as listed in number five. In number six, this clarifies the financial assurances component. The Board's previous resolution, the one that we still look to today, says all nonprofits must provide an audit, an annual audit. That is difficult to apply because different sized organizations tend to have different levels of financial assurances, and so this recommends keeping the open books procedure in place, A, keeping the tax filings procedure in place, B, but then C, implementing a tiered structure, so that we request a full audit for organizations with annual revenues of $300,000 or greater, a review, and there's language defining what constitutes an audit and a review for the 100,000 to 300,000 range, a compilation for the smallest, and a waiver process for organizations if, if they're not able to provide one of the stated items so that they can request to provide some other type of third-party documentation, such as a bank statement, to support their internally-prepared profit and loss or balance sheet financial statements. This is one of the items that, as we looked at other communities, other community county governments, and also other types of funders, providing nonprofit grants, that this would be standard practice.
So the previous policy had, really didn't have a lot of teeth in it, but it said recommended administrative expenses of under 12%.
It did.
Yeah.
The reason that didn't get carried forward is because that would be up to any one of the, any one single grant program to decide if that's going to be one of the eligibility criteria.
Okay.
Okay.
We left in number seven from your previous resolution around a commissioner serving on a board, and that concludes the resolution piece. So this is a lot of information. Remember, two parts. The, the first part being what changes would the board like to recommend, approve for strategic partnership grants? The second part, what base level foundation do we want to have in place for any county nonprofit grant?
Okay. So that's what's in the resolution. If we wanted to also move forward on changes to strategic partnership funding process, how would that be accomplished?
I had a motion on the screen. Let me go back to it.
Okay.
So you could approve the updates to the strategic partnership grants as presented? That could be a motion?
Okay.
You could, you could move to do it, to just approve the timeline through eligibility pieces as one, one component? You could, and leave off the committee, for example?
Um, so this is really, this is, okay, so this would really just be kind of a commission giving direction to the manager, there's not a resolution to adopt.
There isn't a resolution to adopt.
All right, Commission, so there's two different pieces to it. One is guidelines for any nonprofits, the other is changes to strategic, and we can do one or both, or continue as we are, so.
Is there, is there two or three?
Well, there's.
I'll get us started with one of two.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to move that we direct staff to approve updates to the strategic partnership grants process regarding items A and B, the timeline, budget, projects, and eligibility, and the grant committee review and criteria as written, and with the additional context and detail that, that staff would flesh out. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the table.
And they have a request to open.
We will do that. So are there, but any, any other initial commission discussion before we take public comment?
Take the comment first.
Are there any other comments from commissioners before we take public comment?
We can have it after public comment.
Yeah, we can, we can talk more as we hear from people. All right, all right, let's go ahead. We're going to, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this motion and also potentially a discussion about the nonprofit guidelines organization-wide? Yeah, we'll start with you, and then we'll come to Robin, you second, okay? So come on up and to the podium. Cindy, you had a question or comment? And you've got three minutes to comment, and you'll get an orange light when you have about 30 seconds left. When you get a red light, it means your time's up, and please respect that, because we want to give all members of the public who speak an equal amount of time.
My name is Cindy McMahon, and I am co-leader of Western North Carolina Nonprofit Pathways, which is a funders collaborative that provides training and consulting in order to strengthen nonprofits across the 18 western counties. You may also know me as a member of the Buncombe County School Board, but I'm not wearing that name tag today. I just want to commend you on addressing these questions, because I think it has been very confusing for nonprofits in Buncombe County about how to get the money. Do we just call Commissioner Belcher at home, or is there a process? How do we do this? And so in terms of fairness and consistency and clarity, I think this brings a lot of light to the process, and I really commend you on that. The other thing I just want to bring to your attention is that there are folks in our community who are experts on, in their communities and doing that work, but they may not be expert grant writers. And want to be sure that we continue to provide a, a way to support those folks who are doing really good work but may not have that high level of ability to navigate the bureaucracy. So if there can be enough flexibility in the process and, as Jasmine said earlier, the, the ability to work within a fiscal sponsors, sponsorship situation, for instance, rather than having to have your own 501(c)(3), those kinds of opportunities bring a higher level of equity, in addition to the equity that you've been talking about in terms of spreading it across Buncombe County and making sure that all of our communities are, are benefiting from this. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Kim? I'm sorry, Robin. My wire's crossed.
So good evening, Commissioners. I'm Robin Merrill, managing attorney at Pisgah Legal Services, and we have long enjoyed a beneficial relationship with Buncombe County. It's taken many forms, and we thank you for that. We really see you as our partners in serving the residents of Buncombe County, and we're one of those organizations that although our office is on Charlotte Street, our clients live in every community in this county. And I also wanted to say thank you to Rachel. She makes herself available to us, and we really appreciate her help and support and guidance in navigating your process. Also, I want to say that we welcome accountability and structure and reporting, and we are prepared to meet those requirements. I do have a couple of questions, and I don't, I know this is not an opportunity for dialogue, so I don't expect you to answer it, but a couple of questions, and one of them is how you define a project, because there's a, a listing of maximum of three years' funding per project. What's a project? Is all of Pisgah Legal Services a project, or is our eviction, eviction defense a project? And also, three years, is that three years of annualized funding? Is that one three-year grant? And I'd like to stand here and tell you, if you give me three years of funding, I'll make eviction stop, but that's not going to happen. Likewise, with our domestic violence project or our public benefits projects. I mean, the things that we work on that are crucial to people's lives are intrinsic problems that I'd like to work myself out of a job, but I don't think it's coming any day soon. So I would just ask you to reflect on that sort of requirement. You know, we certainly don't want to be dependent on you or any other funding source, but the reality is, is that funding for what we do can be hard to come by. And so we need it, and it allows us to leverage other funding. We do greatly appreciate everything that you've ever done for us, and we want to continue to be able to offer quality services to the residents of Buncombe County.
All right, thanks, Robin. All right, anyone else? Mr. Yelton, and then Mr. Rice in the back.
First off, I'd like to thank Jasmine for asking for public comment. That was a very good move. Appreciate that. As I listen to this, I, I keep coming back to something I told you all when this was on New Business. It's where the service is given rather than the dollar amount. And so you might have some organization giving service in Barnardsville that you don't have anywhere else in the county. And you might have another organization, though, in Fairview giving something to Fairview. So you look at your equality on dollar amount, folks, not on service, but on dollar amount. I also would suggest that you get somebody from Pisgah Legal involved, since you're using these legal definitions. It might be worthwhile to consider that as an option. And also, I don't see anything at all in what I've said, and I believe this, you said a dollar amount that you're going to give to nonprofits, and it stays that dollar amount, period, end of discussion. You don't go over it, you don't go under it, you manage like a person. You manage that. And when you pass all that responsibility off to a committee, you all are not doing your job, because you may see something on there that you don't want to fund the next year, and it needs to go to this project, so you tell this project, wait till next year and we'll fund you. Because remember, you can only spend a certain amount, X dollars. Base it on dollar amount rather than function. And also, it's so simple. I've said it from day one. I want to know where my money's going. You can do SARS, and you can do all this accounting, just let them open their books. If somebody's not willing to open their books, why should they get a dime of a taxpayer's money? If they're not willing to sit down and show you, this is what we're doing, this is 25% of my funding, but my whole object, because your goal is to take that 25% and get more services than that actual dollar, right? So you need to see the whole books, the whole plan. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. After Mr. Rice, anyone else wish to comment on this item? All right, Mr. Rice, you'll be our last public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm really concerned about the double-dipping. You're going to be giving money out to a certain amount of money, but then you've got the Department of Health and Human Services where you're getting contracts that these same organizations that are getting money again are going to be benefiting from as well. So how are you going to use that as a conflict of interest, or either how, how are you going to separate it out ethically where one is getting two pots of money? They contract with DHHS, and that's a big deal. So that's a question I'd like to see more defined as well. I've seen the word "open up the books," but 990s don't tell you what the organization is doing. I think it needs to be more refined, like Mr. Yelton's talking about, to give more detail on what these companies are doing. The other thing is, a big, big one in the burr of my side here is, I've been here for 30-some years watching this process. I'm, I'm glad to see somebody's trying to define something, but I've never witnessed as much conversation about this piece of $3 million or less. I've never seen the lack of discussion on this compared to the millions of dollars that you, you just pass on Consent Agenda. So I'm just concerned even deeper about the, the nonprofits and what the real purpose behind this money is. You talk about kids, you talk about service, and you talk about all of that, but I think this is about as political as you get when you spend as much time on nonprofits. So I hope we can iron it out. I hope these little people starting up and doing things, a lot of times, the mom and pops have a lot better ideas than some of these big ones, because they already set in their ways. We need to stir the pot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner, there's a motion and a second on the table. The motion is to support the recommended changes on the strategic partnership grants program. Further discussion?
I will, so we're, the motion is on both A and B, right? Oh, I'm sorry. The motion is on A and B. I'm not comfortable with B on the timeline, so.
So pull, pull, pull those up.
Put that back up, Rachel.
Yeah, I want clarification on the...
Or A's the timeline.
A's the timeline.
Yeah. Okay. Where is that at? Okay, because we got the resolution, okay, which is separate. Okay?
I'll walk through the pieces very slowly. Timeline?
And leave it there for just a second, because I think, I think, Commissioner, you're saying the timeline, you're not, that's the part you want to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just not following this, and, I mean, and the ones that spoke, I think, made it more clear than that than Rachel, but I really was not understanding and talk- And talk with county managers, we're just passing this for them to go forward, correct? To look at. We're not really putting anything in ink right now, right? Can you explain that?
Well, what we're asking tonight, Rachel, would you go back to A and B real quickly? We're asking tonight for you to give us permission to, if we're going to go to a committee, that we would have to craft the application, and we'll get Legals review on the application to make sure that, that what we're looking for is three people in each district. But what you're giving us tonight is the ability to go forward and look at a committee structure for strategic partnerships. And then we would need to advertise for that committee and get members of that committee and bring those back for you to appoint. But also, we're asking to make, to set, we would bring back to you what that budget would look like. So we'll set a specific pot of money. Our recommendation at pre-meeting was that pot of money is the same amount that you gave us last year. So you will establish a budget for nonprofits, that that committee will work to allocate as well. So we're asking, yes, pretty much for guidance and direction tonight, can we move forward with this structure, which is a grant committee structure? What our review process would look like, what the criteria would look like? And then we would then craft the application to make sure we can get the right people to serve on that committee.
Okay. Yeah, that's a short version and makes a lot more sense to me. So, you know, I'm concerned about the committee, too. I mean, like I say, we need some very, very intelligent people on that, and I would like for that to be, you know, interviewed, just like anything that's going to be this important to me. So I can go ahead and support going forward with it, but I think it's going to get a little more complicated as we start, though.
Okay, so, my understanding that we broke A and B out, that we're not voting on the committee tonight, that we...
That's not correct.
We are.
I think the motion is comprehensive of implementing A and B. Is that correct, Jasmine?
That's correct.
All right.
Okay. But you've got a resolution also.
Additionally, that would be our second, the second motion that we'll move forward once we vote on this.
Okay, well, my understanding is that we, okay, if we do not have clear guidelines on what that committee is going to include and where they're going to be specifically from, I'm not going to vote for it. However, I will gladly support the resolution. I like the resolution. I think the resolution has, puts us on the right path as far as the, the timeline. I don't see a problem with the timeline, the budget, and all that. And so, my understanding is that we were, we were breaking out the committee, which is B, and that, if you don't want to push all that through, then you're, you know, then, you know, I'm not going to vote for it. But what I will support is the resolution. I like the resolution. As a matter of fact, I'll make a motion to approve it.
There's already a motion on the table.
It's motioned.
We've got to, we've got to vote on, we've got to vote on that one before we take up another one. And in terms of the committee, it basically says there's, there's three districts, and there'll be three members appointed from each district.
All right, so let me give you the problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay? And it's a big one. Okay? Is, number one, we don't know where, where we're at as far as, as far as the state. We think we know, but we don't really know, right? As far as the districts. We know where it's...
We do know.
Well, well, y'all know, and I'm glad y'all know, and y'all are plugged into everything, so I appreciate that.
It's been in the paper, hasn't it?
I understand where it's been in the paper, guys, okay? But if you look at it, if you look at it, and, really, did you just say it's been in the paper?
Yeah.
Well, I know it's been in the paper, okay?
No, I wondered if you read it.
Well, you know I've read it.
Okay, well, I mean, why are we arguing? Come on, Joe.
I'm not, I'm not arguing, guys. I said, I said very clearly. So you've got, if the new district is the way it is, and y'all know this, because some of you've had conversations with me about this, is that the new district splits a city into three ways and sends it out into the, out into the county. My concern would be that you could have all nine members from three different districts, and all nine members be within the city limits of Asheville.
Well, can I make a suggestion?
And I...
Can I just make a suggestion? It's a valid question, but could we just have some language that says that the intent is to, you know, appoint people from across the county geographically? I mean, and you'd still have the three districts, I think the three districts is fine, but, you know, some additional language to make it clear that I think the intent is to have broad, broad geographic representation of the...
Yeah, I agree with you.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that goal.
Okay, so, so, and I don't, and I'm, all I'm saying, guys, is that I could, you know, walk outside and get hit by a truck, you know, which I hope I don't, but, you know, I want to make sure that these, that these things are not based on opinion, they're based on fact. Okay? I appreciate how everybody feels, okay? The reality is, is that, you know, there could be different people making decisions, right? There could be different people making decisions, you know, as, as we move along. So if, and I don't really know what it looks like, but, you know, if, you know, the, the new district one, which goes across the top of the, top of the county, you know, if you had, if you had a representative from, and I'm going to be very simple, okay? I don't want anybody making any cute remarks, okay? It can be on the left, it can be on the right, it can be in the middle. You know what I'm talking about? The left would be Lester, the middle is Weaverville, and the right is towards Barnardsville. However we do that, I, I would, I would, I would support, because, number one, it's going to pass, two, I would support making sure that there was language in there that described that representation in that fashion. For example, and I'm going to say this, and I'm going to hush, is if it's the District Three, the, the new District Three alignment, which would include, say, Upper Harmony, you know, Inca, Biltmore Lake, and then to the right, South Asheville, that, that type of, you know, representation is what I would want the committee to have.
I think I hear a friendly amendment there, so I'm going to, I'm going to take the baton. How about if I could make an amendment to the original motion to amend that bullet point to say, three, three members per district ensuring strong representation and diversity across the full geography of the county?
I would say geographic...
Does the person who seconded the motion agree with the amendment to this?
I agree with the amendment.
Could I add to that friendly amendment?
Well, I just get, you'd get plum-friendly with it. Yes, sir.
Okay. That one of the three would be a commissioner from that district. I think we...
I don't agree with that.
No.
No, it shouldn't, no.
You don't want...
Well, I would, well, there you go.
Well, let's talk about it there. I mean, it's on the table, so. So that's an idea? Do you want to speak in favor?
Are we going to run away from making the decision?
Let me, can I speak?
I don't see it as running away so much as this is a really unique opportunity to, to have full citizen leadership and, and input driving this process. And it's about a, you know, between $1 and $2 million annually, I think, so I would be very excited to see this led entirely by residents in our community from across the full geography of Buncombe County. So that's how I'd respond.
Commissioner Frye?
Okay.
Commissioner Frye?
I liked what the lady from Pisgah Legal had to say a minute ago. Right now, this makes no sense. Zero. And trying to put something together, that many 20-some pages of stuff to bring to us in one evening, well, two evenings, you got thrown on agenda last round. I'm not ready to vote for it because of the fact is, there's a lot in there that needs to be fixed. And I'm sorry, there's a lot that needs to be fixed. We have enough nonprofits going at the present time. And I sat and looked at what we have out there right now, and we got a lot of them. And we got a lot of money out there. But the fact is, you know, the nonprofits are working hard. Everybody's working hard. I understand people that really want it to work, but everybody's saying that we have all these people that are geniuses out in the area that can make this work. We're that. You know, we're putting something together tonight where the Pisgah Legal likes it, or they don't like it, or I like it, or I don't like it. They, all them pages tonight have made just a little bit of sense. Not a lot, just a little. And it's taken up so much time in this room that I feel so sorry for some of the people that's sitting in here that's waiting for an opportunity to speak on something different. This should have never been put here in this deal to start with. I'm sorry. But I, I can't vote for it because it's not totally understandable. I understand it's just something we're going to say. No, I'm not voting for something I'm going to say. I want to see what we're going to vote for before I vote.
All right. Further comments?
Yeah, I would request a restatement of the motion with the friendly amendment, if the clerk can take a shot at that. And if you need time, I'd be glad to give it to you.
Can I say a few things while Lamar reviews that? I, as you all know, I've spent my entire career in the nonprofit sector as an executive director and a professional fundraiser. This was based completely on industry best practice and what other granting organizations do. So we didn't totally recreate the will on this. This should, these standards and criteria should be things that our nonprofit organizations are already used to doing as part of other grant applications that they apply for. I do want to say, I think we've interchanged a word, "project." I think typically would be "program" versus, yeah, what is the specific program and outcomes that you're working for? So we, we may want to tweak "project" versus "program," but I do hope that clarifies that question for you.
Let's ask the clerk to restate the motion.
Okay. First, I have a motion to approve the update to strategic partnership grants process as presented A and B with a friendly amendment that states that there is a diverse representation across geographic regions for representations for the committee.
Within the, each district.
Okay.
Because you're one...
I think it would just, it would be a, with three members from each district, comma, ensuring...
And, and I think that was already in the committee description, so that's why I didn't put that part in there, but...
That's fair. That's fair.
That's right.
All right.
Okay, so, so the intent is that from each district, there would be geographic diversity in that representation. Okay? And I, I hope people understand, and I did read the paper, I hope people understand that that is important in Buncombe County.
It's part of the motion.
I know it's part of, but don't cut me off. I got, I, okay?
Got a lot of other stuff to do.
We do have a lot of other stuff to do, but, you know, I don't get this, I don't, I don't get to say this stuff that often, so. But it is very important to me that the entire Buncombe County is represented, and if we're going to have citizen input in a citizen committee, then I want to make sure that those citizens come from Barnardsville, Sandy mush, Candler, the City of Asheville, Weaverville, and so on. So, and I will hush, Chairman.
All right. Any other comments on the motion? I'll just make one last one. I'm, I'm supportive of it. I think that this is, although I have mixed feelings, honestly, I think there's a lot of pros and cons to having these decisions made by your elected officials. I think, I think we do listen a lot to the community in a way that, you know, it's just different. I mean, running for election, you got to put yourself out there. And so, I think the decision about whether to have the, you know, the decisions, not that, we do have to make the final vote, but I think from a practical standpoint, there will be a great deal of pressure on the commission to approve the recommendations that come out of this process, from a practical standpoint. So, so I think there's, I think there's trade-offs, but I think there's been a lot of dissatisfaction with the way we've done it in the past. I think we need to try something new. I'm willing to try it. And I, one of my biggest, one of my biggest concerns, though, is that I think when you look at the organizations that are currently funded under strategic partnerships, many of them are longstanding, are, are organizations we have longstanding relationships with that do have missions and programs that will not be gone in three or four years. And this is exactly what Pisgah Legals, Legals point with, and there's many others on the list. If you look at, if you look at who we fund now, a very high percentage of them are similar. They're working on issues that are not going away. So I think, and that problem doesn't come due immediately, but it will come due fairly soon. So I think we're just going to have to look at that, because I think if we implement the policies as, as outlined here, you know, most of those organizations will lose funding in a couple of years for what they do. And I think that would be a mistake. But we've got some time to evaluate it and, and modify it over time, so we don't have to figure out all of it tonight. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. It passed at six to one. Are there any other motions?
Make a, a motion to pass the resolution as written.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and second to approve the resolution regarding guidelines for nonprofit funding. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, thanks for everyone's work on this. We appreciate it, and we will carry forward. Okay. Next up, under New Business, is internal audit bonus approval request, and Tricia Burnett will present this item.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening. I'll be brief. Come before you for an approval request for what we're calling a bonus. So I came on board mid-September. In the meanwhile, between the, the time my predecessor left the internal audit director position and when I came, my colleague was appointed as interim, and during that time, she worked outside of her, the scope of her original position without an adjustment in salary. And in our personnel manual, the only way to address that is to call it a bonus, but it is essentially retroactive pay for the interim work she performed as internal audit director, if that makes sense. This is above an amount that the county manager can approve without your, your approval, so that's why I'm before you today. That's brief. Any questions that I can answer?
You want, you want a motion, right?
Motion to approve the bonus for Kelly.
All right, there's a motion for Commissioner Presley.
A second.
There's a motion and second. Thank you very much. And, you know, I would just want to comment on this. This is not a lot of money, but the reason that we do this is that in the past, there were a lot of bonuses that were handed out that were not done appropriately. So we have a policy that any bonuses must be approved by the commission in an open public meeting.
That's maybe a hundred thousand.
And that's why we're doing that this evening. So all in favor, please say aye.
Thirteen.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is a discussion of the Art Leicester Highway Transit Expansion, which we talked about at our last meeting as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We are bringing this item back to you. Last time, we brought it during your pre-meeting, just to give you information generally about the request. Tonight, we have before you a request for action to address the City of Asheville's request for funding support for the Art Leicester Extension. It's a $28,934 request for funding. The proposed route would be approximately two miles in length, would include four signed stops, would be operating seven days per week, and would provide fixed route access in proximity to Irwin Middle and High Schools, the Villas at Fallon Spruce, and Carmel Ridge Apartments, just as a, as a reminder of the service area. County support is requested to cover the additional operating costs to be incurred by the City of Asheville, and that would be to operate the extension from January 5th, 2020, through June 30th of 2020. We would expect that the city would provide us detailed operating statistics about the, the service that it's performed, stop usage, on-time performance, those sorts of things. There is a recommended motion, and the mechanism we would recommend that we use to provide that funding would be the rescinding of 5307 grant funds, which we have access to but can rescind to the city as an exchange for that service for the six-month period. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have the presentation, a few slides available, if you want to see the maps again or any other information from the last presentations.
Why don't I just put the map up on the screen, just so folks who may not have seen it before will kind of see the specific location we're talking about? Okay, thank you very much. So, that's Leicester Highway, and the blue line is the new, the new extension further out beyond the city limits.
Yes.
All right. Great, thank you. All right, Commission, discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Matt. All right, next up is a discussion of the solar RFP for public facilities, and Jeremiah LaRoy will present this item.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Newman. This is also an extension of something we brought to you all at the, at the last pre-meeting. I won't belabor the point on too many of these slides, since most of them are a little repetitive. You've seen these before, but I just wanted to give you some quick updates, and we are requesting board action at the end of this presentation. So, we are looking at, uh, our background here. Hundred percent renewable goal for county operations by 2030 and for all of Buncombe County by 2042. And our renewable roadmapping process identified aggregated solar as a means of helping to achieve this goal. Just a super quick update in what we've been doing to assess our facilities, working with our maintenance staff, looking at, at our facilities, their age, their roof, their shade, their orientation, their energy intensity, all of those things, assessing the structural components of the building, looking at solar design, and, and then, uh, the actual financial impact, budget estimates, and the return on investment for some of these projects. As an aggregated group, uh, we've got several partners. The city of Asheville is also a part of this process. They've identified 10 sites that's about one megawatt of capacity. AB Tech, since our last update, has actually added eight additional sites and requested that we do an analysis on those sites. I hadn't, wasn't able to update this before it was due to be presented to you, but since last week, uh, the city and county schools have also given us a list of sites to assess for them as well. So, just in the last two weeks, we've had an additional 24 sites added to this potential RFP. It doesn't mean all of them will necessarily make it into the RFP, but we're doing that due diligence on those sites to ensure that they're quality sites that we can add to the proposal if they make sense. Uh, as, as I presented last time, this is the results of our internal analysis and the 14 sites that we've personally identified that are county-owned, that we can move forward with, that are facilities that make good sense for solar. Several libraries, transfer station, animal shelter. So, again, we've, we've gone over this list before. The preliminary budgets that we came up with, also the size of the systems. Uh, again, I, I need to stress that these are preliminary. What we essentially did was some solar design work to determine what the size of the systems would be, and then make some calls to, uh, a few developers to get some basic estimates on what they thought those systems would cost. It's a total of 1.2 megawatts on 14 facilities and a cost of approximately $2.9 million. Again, that's a preliminary budget. We won't know for sure until you put a project out to bid what, what a developer can actually do the job for. So, quick outline of the RFP itself. In your package, you have a draft version of the RFP, just because we wanted to, to give you a, a pretty basic idea of what the language would look like. But it's essentially, you know, as we've talked about, a request for construction on public facilities and land. The bid estimates would be turnkey solutions, include the cost of installation, potentially the cost of operation and maintenance of the, of the, uh, systems over the lifetime of the systems. Because this project has gotten bigger, um, over the last several weeks, we've gotten several more sites. So, we're looking at the potential for implementing this award in phases if necessary. We'd like to be able to have that as an option. We want to open it up for additional alternative construction plans and additions for things like, just bright ideas, like installations for, you know, solar plus storage, just as an option. We're also looking at asking any potential bidders to give us multiple options for what this might look like from a financial perspective. So, solar leasing is now something that's available in North Carolina. So, you know, what would be the difference between owning a system versus leasing a system? What would it look like to debt finance that system, install or financing? So, we want multiple options on the table for the, the potential way to move forward with those systems. So, we're asking for that as a part of the RFP process. And, uh, of course, we're requiring payment and performance bonds. You all know that's essentially just sort of an insurance for the, uh, for the county. And the expected useful life of these systems is essentially 30 years. So, our next steps, um, we've got to complete the analysis of all these new sites, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We're going to confirm any additional partners. We have had some folks reach out to us in addition to the school systems that have expressed interest. So, we're going to sort of move forward and see if they have, uh, an interest in, in continuing on with that partnership, see if they need some site analysis done as well. We're going to continue to refine that RFP language. Again, the draft version you have is a, is a pretty good template for what we expect it to look like. But as new sites come on, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll continue to look at, at fine tuning that language and collaborating with our purchasing staff, our facilities and maintenance folks, and, and using sort of industry standards. We'll also be looking at, um, entering into inter-local agreements with each of the agencies that we're going to be doing this with, just so that there's, there's clear guidelines around what roles and responsibilities each agency has. This timeline is probably a little more aggressive today than it was two weeks ago, given we've got all these new sites. But we're still going to do the best we can to try and meet it. Our, our goal, obviously, to bring to you today is, is, uh, board action for approval of issuance of the RFP once all the site analysis is are complete. We're going to try and get those site analysis done by the end of the calendar year. Issue the RFP sometime in the month of January, and then give several weeks of opportunity for bidders to ask questions, go through the process, potentially, uh, bring that back to the board sometime in March, and, uh, recommend, uh, you know, entering into contract negotiations with a, a successful bidder. So, all that were to go as, as planned, we could potentially see some boots on the ground, so to speak, by, by the spring. Uh, again, that's a little more aggressive than it was two weeks ago, uh, given we've got quite a few more sites, but we're going to work as hard as we can to get those things done as quickly as possible so that we have, uh, all the information we need to move forward. It was quick, but I'm here if you got any questions.
Other any questions?
So, how do you, how do you see the facilities analysis that we're doing on the buildings working in with this? We certainly don't want to put solar on a building we're planning on replacing, and we don't want to put, you know, solar in,
Absolutely.
on parking lot covers, and I think you pulled that out, right?
Correct, yes. Uh, we did initially have two potential canopy sites on surface lots. We have removed those from the RFP for several reasons. I think you mentioned one that's really important, and that is for potential infrastructure growth. And when we have built things on parking lots in the past, and since space is at a premium, that is something we did consider. As well as frankly, the fact that those types of canopy systems are incredibly high-end and very expensive, and sort of drive the overall cost of the projects up pretty significantly. So, it made it a little, as a package deal, a little bit less of an attractive financial option. So, we did remove those. And, uh, yeah, we are really focused on only those projects that make the most sense. So, we've, that's why we've gone through so much of, of the due diligence upfront to determine, you know, making sure that they're structurally sound, that the roofs are either very new or in very good condition. And we've had structural engineers go out to these roofs and certify them. Uh, so, we've, we've tried to do as much due diligence upfront to make sure that any site that goes into this RFP, we know is a good quality site for, for solar installation and can handle it. And it makes sense, not only from an energy perspective, but from a financial perspective as well.
So, I know if you're bringing the schools in, at our last, at our last meeting, we had, actually had, at the school capital commission meeting, we had quite a bit of conversation about roofs and about, you know, roof replacements.
Sure.
And, um, so I would think we're going to have to be really careful. Is there a reason why we have to do all of this at one time?
Well, you know, it has grown significantly beyond what we initially probably thought it would. Uh, but the, the reason that we wanted to do this as an aggregated project really was to help drive some of those costs down. As a one-off project, doing them one at a time or two at a time, we really felt like that was going to drive the expense of these projects up significantly. Whereas, some of the developers that we've talked to about this say, you know, if you can give us multiple jobs at one time, we can give you a better price. Uh, so that was really the sort of the thought process behind that, that bulk purchasing, I guess you could call it, to a certain degree, by doing multiple projects in one package.
Who's paying for AB Tech and Buncombe County and all them solar panels? Like to know.
Well, we, we haven't worked out the financing of any of it.
See, you don't have, you don't have a problem solved yet, okay?
No, sir. No, we haven't bid the projects out, so we haven't actually gotten legitimate cost estimates for those yet.
It's, it's acting like it's getting bigger.
Sure.
But it's not bigger yet. I understand Jason's sitting here in the audience that works for Duke. And, you know, what's one megawatt do, Jason, Mr. Wells?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna ask that. We, we direct, yeah, but you can't just ask questions of people in the audience. You can ask questions of our staff, and I'm not going to just let commissioners call on people from the audience. If they want to comment, they'll have a chance to do that. We're going to take public comment on this.
He's here for a reason.
I'm just gonna, we're just gonna follow our rules.
He's here for a reason.
So, I, I think I actually, I can probably answer that to a certain degree. So, just as an example, one of our, one of our current projects is the landfill gas-to-energy project, which we sell that energy back to Duke Energy on the Grid. It's about a 1.3 megawatt, so it's pretty close to a megawatt. And they, they estimate that, now, there's some debate as to how you come up with these numbers, but they estimate that to power about 1,100 homes. So, if that gives you kind of a general sense for what one megawatt can do.
Okay.
Any other?
It's not coming to the county. It's going back in the service. It's going in the lines. It's going all around. It can be in South Carolina, because they have places in South Carolina.
Yeah, so the.
So, we're selling to them.
Well, no, it would essentially be an offset of our own usage. We wouldn't actually be selling anything. So, when you net meter a system, you essentially tie it to the meter of the building. And what it would do is offset any usage from that building. So, if you have a building that uses 1,000 kilowatt-hours, you had a, a system, a solar panel system that created 500 kilowatt-hours, you would essentially only pay Duke for the 500 kilowatt that, you know, you didn't create yourself.
Alright, but just to, to make the distinction between the land, the project on the retired landfill and I think all of the installations in this RFP for public, for public facilities. The landfill project, 100% of the electrical output of that system will be delivered onto Duke's electrical grid. And, and, you know, the owner of the system will be paid for the sale of that power. But all of the facilities in this RFP are actually for direct onsite use. So, the solar electricity that's generated is directly utilized in the public facilities that they're located on or adjacent to. So, every kilowatt-hour they generate is a kilowatt-hour that the county or the other public entities don't have to purchase from, from Duke Energy. And if you do need additional power, because it's a, the building needs more power, or it's nighttime or whatever, you can still, they'll still buy whatever additional power is needed
Correct.
from Duke, but the, the energy generated will literally be used in our public facilities.
That is correct. And we did not design the vast majority of these systems to cover 100% of the electricity use of a given facility. We wanted to leave at least some wiggle room in there for improved energy efficiency of our facilities as well, because we don't want a system that is larger than, than the peak demand of that particular facility. So.
Okay.
But yes, that is exactly right. We, it'll, it'll offset our usage, and we won't be selling anything back to Duke. We'll just be purchasing less from Duke and using renewable energy to power our own buildings.
Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the issuance of the solar RFP.
Second.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments before we open the public comment? Alright. And, uh, and I guess I'll just make one other comment before we do, we do, we do go forward on this. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it from our staff, and I know staff at other public organizations have been, you know, getting engaged in this as well. I think it's, I think it's exciting that we have an initiative where the city and the county and our public schools are working together on this. We could all do it on our own, but I think by, by doing it together, working together is hard, it always takes more work. It does make things more complicated. But I think in this case, it's going to result in a project that's going to be, um, much more impactful. And, um, you know, and the other thing I would say, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the answers back, so we don't know what the, we don't know what the costs are going to be, what the different financing options are going to be yet. You know, the landfill project, Duke is financing that project. So, the county actually doesn't have to put any capital into that project to build that five-megawatt project. We're actually just leasing the land, so the county just generates money from that project from the start. This project will, will, will probably look different. But there are, there are definitely different options, um, to consider. So, we, we'll see, we'll see what comes forward. But the reality is, is that for these, for our, for our own buildings and for our public schools and AB Tech, the county invests millions of dollars a year in paying the utility bills for those organizations and for our own organizations. So, just business as usual, we're spending four or five million dollars of taxpayer money just to keep the lights on and the HVAC systems running. So, um, we're going to be investing lots of money in paying energy costs as an organizations next year, and over the next decade, and over the next many decades. And so, I believe, you know, I'm very optimistic that we're going to get back from this RFP proposals that show that we're going to be able to procure, through whichever of these financing options we end up selecting, we're going to be able to procure clean renewable energy at a cost that's very competitive with procurement of, uh, traditional fossil fuel energy as we're doing it today. So, I'm very excited about it. I'll also say that, um, when we look at the, the policy goals that we set just for ourself, our, our goal of getting the county to 100% renewable for our own operations, if we look at the total megawatts that we think we'll get to in this RFP, it's a, you know, it's a modest step. Uh, there's going to be, we still have a lot of other things we're going to need to do just to get to our own government goal. But, um, but, you know, it's getting to that 100% goal, you have to get started. And so, this is going to be a big step. We're all going to learn a lot about this as an organization for how to do these kind of projects and how to manage them. But this is just the first step of many that we are going to need to take as a county organization to get to this, uh, this important goal. But I'm excited that we're getting started. So, alright, with that, I'll hush, and, uh, we'll take comments from the public.
Now, where are we at right now, Brownie, on, uh, the county buildings? Didn't we talk about this last year? We was at 15% or was that?
So, I think that, I think that, I think we need, Jeremiah, please correct me, I probably get some of this wrong, I'm kind of rounding numbers. I think we need about 20 megawatts to get to the county's goal for our own operations. So, the landfill project on our retired landfill gets us about five megawatts. So, it gets us about 25% of the way. And that's really the project that we have underway currently. So, this is kind of the next set of projects that we would start on.
Well, I just want to put, you know, we went through a strategic planning deal. We had 15 items on the strategic planning deal. Guess what? Solar wasn't one of them. It didn't come in on the top five. But so happened, here you are bringing it forward, Brownie, and it's right, it's your job. That's the way you make your living. And that's, you know, it's plain and simple. You're sitting in the same meeting as I was sitting in. This shouldn't even be in here right now. Because we all sit in the same meeting, staff, commissioners, that was, this was not on a plan. Period. There's no way to get to 100%, period. I don't care what you say. Jason, let them put a solar panel on the jail over here and then go turn the power off and see when the generator fires up. It'll run all the time. So, we can't get there with what they're trying to do. I'm sorry. I want it to work, and I think everybody that wants solar should have it. I think. But is it us, people that come from the flatland and moved up here, to decide? They went through the business, they made a lot of money. Now, all they do is go out and tell people, you need solar, and we're doing this solar farm down here. But we're not making anything off of it, you know, I don't have, it, it's not something that I'm part of. Yeah, you are, Brownie. You brought it forward. You told him everything he needed to know. I've got the emails. He come out of finance. He become a genius quickly, didn't he? So, I'll be voting no on this for a simple fact, it can't work. You know, you can bring all the people that want stuff, the schools, I'm on the board at AB Tech, they have no money. Where's, you know, Buncombe County, where do they get their money? From us. So, why are we going to look at all that stuff when we don't have the money? You know? Why run these people in the county in debt? We have people sitting in this audience all night worrying about how to get their trash can down the hill. And then we're sitting here talking about $3 million, maybe. You know? We got solar panels in the school down here. Half the time in the summertime, it's, it's hot until the evening, and in wintertime, it's cold until the evening. So, it's not working really that well. So, you know, if somebody can come up with a better idea, you know, if Duke wanted to pull out, you know, it's like you saying, we can buy from somebody else. Well, whose lines are you going to use to get it in here? I think they own the lines. You know? And I did talk to him about, he said all this would go to the thing. Brownie, you can't even utilize, we're going to sell that down at the solar farm, down on the river. We're selling it. It's going into lands. And it's going to take care of the community, not just Buncombe County buildings. It's going to take care of the community. So, don't bring it up, but that's going to be 10% of anything, because it's not. You know, five megawatts is probably a pretty big solar farm. And thank them for doing, I thank them for doing it. But that's what I want people to do. I want people to do it. It's not for us, as commissioners, to determine that this is what we're going to try to do for the people. We have a school down here, have people check on it. So, you know, it ain't working.
Okay. Alright, with that, um, we're going to go ahead and open up the public comment. So, who would?
I actually do have
I'm sorry.
one more slide.
Hang on just one moment. We did. So, so there were three commissioners who indicated they wanted a public comment on this item. So, um, yeah, so, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Bishwar, and myself. So, just, yeah, just to follow our policy, we do need to have three commissioners. Thank you for that procedural clarification. Alright. All right. Yeah, so who, who would like to, anyone like to comment on the motion? You may go first. Yep. All right, so just to, just to refresh the rules, each person gets, gets three minutes to speak, up a maximum of three minutes. So if you get a red light, it means your time's up. Go ahead. Please just share your name and where, where you live, and go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Maeve Goldberg. I'm a senior at Asheville High School. Thank you for giving me this time today to speak with you on behalf of my classmates at Asheville High School and at Cilsa and the organization Youth for Environmental Stewardship, which is a coalition of all the nine public high schools in the area as well as UNCA. My high school, Asheville High, has shown a dedication to meaningful climate action. Two years ago, we delivered nearly 600 signatures of support to both the Buncombe County Commissioners and the Asheville City Council when you were deciding on whether or not to pass the 100% renewable energy resolution. Our Asheville High School Student Government Association passed a climate action resolution as a way to publicly acknowledge and communicate our commitment to addressing climate change with solutions that work for us and our schools. Asheville High School has also shown leadership on a global scale when we won the Global Drawdown Eco Challenge competition in April of 2018, a competition that was rooted in individually-based solutions to reverse global warming. Your youth have demonstrated our commitment to quickly and effectively addressing climate change, not because we think it's fun or easy, but because it's necessary. We now want to see the same strong commitment from our government. Our futures are at stake, and without concrete action from those in power today, we may not have the chance to achieve our dreams in, for tomorrow. Joining this request for proposal is just one of many steps that must be taken to preserve our world, but it is a big one. Our county uses an enormous amount of energy, and currently that energy is supplied mostly by fossil fuels. But solar energy provides a clean, efficient, and cost-effective alternative. This proposal will help the county get the lowest price per kilowatt hour for utility-scale solar installation and have the best financing options. Solar energy will pay for itself over time and then save money that can be spent on other projects. Solar is the gift that keeps on giving. For the last month, I and my peers across the city and county have fiercely advocated for this solar energy proposal. Now, both the Asheville City and Buncombe County School Boards have agreed to join this request, which I see as an incredible first step in helping to achieve the 100% renewable energy goal by 2030. We now ask you to do the same. The choices that you make today will affect your youth's lives in the future, and so I'm delivering 570 signatures to you from Asheville High to ask you to please move forward with the proposal and the information gathering process. The yes members also have more signatures and petitions.
All right. Thank you all for having me. So my name is Spencer Terry. I am a senior at the Nesbitt Discovery Academy, and I also have a speech written about this issue. So we are looking at an exciting future. The iPhone 12, or the dozen, will be coming out in early 2020. The first manned mission to Mars is set to take place in 2025. The world's tallest building should be completed next year, and without immediate and appropriate action, by 2050, ocean levels will threaten six of the world's eight largest cities and agricultural hubs. Temperatures in Southwest Asia will reach such extreme levels that as many as 100 million climate refugees will be forced to flee their homes. Populations of the world will continue to increase as far as it can, as it can sustain, excuse me. And by the time it cannot, there will be nowhere for 10 billion refugees to turn. We're here today to address the future nobody wants to look to, the future nobody is excited for, and the future we continue to create. Not a future only people far down the line will need to contend with, but a future that our children will need to contend with, a future that I and my peers will need to suffer through and wish that something had been done while the chance was still there. It's not a future, it's the future. And now it's time to do something about it. We are not on a runaway train. We're behind the wheel of a car. We are the drivers here. Now is our chance to change the trajectory. It's our chance to steer us towards a brighter future for humanity. Solar power is the push we need. Solar power is a key to this brighter future. We've already gone to Asheville and Buncombe County Boards of Education and requested that they join the solar initiative for this request for proposal for solar bidding to have all positive results. If Buncombe County takes these first steps to becoming 100% renewable and the world follows, the tides of this destruction can be stopped. And in a decade, utility costs will be cut remarkably and the funds of which can be directed towards education or continued betterment of the world. The question today is about the residents of Buncombe County, but the effects of this decision will weigh on the entire world. Now is the time to incite change. This is why solar panels should be incorporated as fast as they can be. And I'm also here to present 218 signatures from the Nesbitt Discovery Academy. You say it can't be done, and I say, not with that attitude.
Hello, my name's Olivia Steinkie. I'm a senior at A.C. Reynolds High School, and I'm presenting 46 proposals.
Hi, my name is Ben Harvey. I'm a junior at Inca High School. I have 93 petitions from Inca High, and I'm also representing North Buncombe High School with 270 petitions.
Hi, everyone. My name is Thales Montero. I'm a junior at UNC Asheville, and I'm here to propose 100 signatures from UNCA.
My name is Harbin Redrick. I'm a senior at TC Robertson. I have 104 signatures.
My name is Myra Harvey. I am a junior at Inca High School, representing Irwin High School with 140 signatures, Owen High School with 49 signatures, and I'd like to say we are the community and we do want this.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Eric Bradford. I am a Candler resident, and tonight I, you usually know me as Asheville Green Works, but tonight I'm just a plain old citizen, and I have a tremendous swell of pride for these students who got together, who pulled these petitions by themselves. This was just their, their doing. They wanted to put this together because of how much this means to them. This, these are your next constituents. These are the people who are going to call Joe Belcher at home one day, which I'd love to have that phone number, by the way, Joe. But these are the guys, these are the people who are going to be expecting a little bit more out of Buncombe County. People come here because they expect more from our area. As a native, I've seen a tremendous amount of change and a tremendous amount of positive change in this area, and it, and it's coming from, from this group right here. And speaking of change from the community, I've got 104 signatures from the community who support this RFP. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Will Harlan. I'm editor of Blue Ridge Outdoors Magazine, also executive director of Friends of Big Ivy in Barnardsville, here to present 130 signatures from churches and the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Maddox, and I am with Youth for Environmental Stewardship. We have been together now for three years. As you heard earlier, two years ago, we presented to, to respectfully you all when you pronounced, when you passed your 100% renewable energy resolution. Last year, we presented to Asheville City when they passed their resolution, and now, as you heard, we've gone to both school boards, and both school boards have voted yes to our yes students. I am here representing also Sierra Club in Audubon. We have 256 signatures. Together with all of us, we have 2,037 signatures, and we'd like to present them. May we approach the bench?
You can present those to our county clerk right over here.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for, thank you all for taking time to be here tonight. Yes, you may go next, and then the, the folks behind him, you can, you're on deck.
Thank you. I'm Ken Braim. I live in Lester, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, wanting to encourage you to adopt this request for proposal. I think it's not only the right thing for the environment, but I think when we get the numbers back, we'll find out that if we're willing to make an investment, it's one that will pay off in the future for the taxpayers of this county. And so I think it's, it's going to make sense economically as well as the right thing for the environment. Just wanted to mention one thing on the strategic planning session. I attended one of the two sessions on the environment and climate change and dealing and addressing climate change was the number one issue that came out of our meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sally Timms with the Sunrise Movement, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I would also like to say that I'm here in solidarity with just economics and strongly support the transition to solar through the solar RFP, and I appreciate the support that some of you have shown for it tonight. I'm here to demand that Buncombe County take bold and radical action on the climate crisis and the injustice we face here in North Carolina and across the world. We are already seeing the effects of climate change, and they are not slowing down. In fact, they are becoming more rampant and drastic every single day. The IPCC report that came out earlier this year detailed the necessity of drastically cutting down our emissions. The timeline laid out in the report was terrifying. If we do not transition to clean energy and begin to sequester the carbon dioxide in the atmosphere in the next 10 years, we will have lost our chance to reverse the climate crisis. These are the top scientists in the world. They know what they are talking about far more than you or I. The science is clear. We must listen to it, and we must take action. Solar is scalable and getting cheaper to implement every day. The monetary costs of the RFP are nothing compared to the physical risks the climate crisis place every day driven by fossil fuel energy. There is no time to wait. We must begin a rapid transition to renewable energy and divest from fossil fuels immediately. The city and county are in the pocket of Duke Energy and must break free from their monopoly in order to move Buncombe County swiftly to clean energy. We must invest in cleaner, more accessible transit as transportation accounts for around 30% of our emissions. This transition must happen by 2030. A transition like the one we are calling for would instill hope in the people of North Carolina and prove to other burgeoning cities that we can be the progressive leader we often claim to be. Buncombe County is faced with two things, a crisis and an immense opportunity. We could create well-paid and equitable jobs while proving that our county has the integrity and efficacy to do what is right. We need a plan that accurately responds to the dangers and the pace of the climate crisis. Change is frightening. The thought of changing business as usual is scary and anxiety-inducing, but the facts of what will happen if we don't are so, so much worse. The science is clear. I am tired of spending what are supposed to be the best years of my life fighting for the chance to have any years at all down the line. We must change now. We do not have a choice. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Lines. I am also here with the Sunrise Movement, and I am also here in solidarity with just economics. I appreciate everything that the students of AHS and Reynolds, et cetera, just said in support of the passing of the RFP. I would like to say that we absolutely need to do this. I appreciate those of you who have taken lead on this and who are championing this cause. As many of the young people in this room have said tonight, we are terrified of the future that we are facing, and we need to come to terms with the reality of the climate crisis. It's happening right now. We are seeing the effects, and we are living through it. My generation has been told that this is a mess that we have to clean up, and what I'm telling you is that we don't have the time, and we need your leadership right now. We see the climate crisis every day. We know that there are wildfires raging in California right now. We know that our brothers and sisters on the coast are still struggling to recover from Hurricane Dorian. We know that droughts and hurricanes and floods and fires are only becoming more frequent. We know that these issues affect communities of color and marginalized and low-income communities more. We know that it's worse for them, and we know that there is the potential of their communities being wiped out entirely due to the climate crisis. This is happening now, and we need to take it seriously and address it, and I think that passing the RFP proposal is a great first step. I'd like to close by saying that yesterday Donald Trump pulled the nation out of the Paris Climate Accord. Last month was the hottest October on record, preceded by the hottest September and the hottest August. Now more than ever, we need bold leadership from people like you. We need our city and county governments to stand up for our right to a dignified and livable future. We need to make a comprehensive climate action plan that will keep our community safe as we face the reality of this crisis. We must take bold leadership and build sustainable communities, and passing the RFP is a great first step. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Yes. And who else would like to speak on this topic? Okay, Mr. Yelton, you can go after the next speaker, and then we'll get to you next.
Hi there. My name is Chloe Moore, and I'm also with the Sunrise Movement. Surprise. I want to tell you about something really important that happened today. Today, November 5th, 2019, over 11,000 scientists got together from all over the world, and they published a scientific article declaring a climate emergency. That was today. And they didn't do this to make money or to gain political power. They did this because the way we are living is putting our whole world in danger, and the science is extremely clear. The climate emergency jeopardizes the lives and safety of all people, and that certainly, certainly includes us here in Buncombe County. To be able to provide for the people of Buncombe County, it is your responsibility to take big, ambitious action, especially towards renewable energy. We need to move towards solar energy, and this could be a huge step forward. This is not undoable. This is necessary. And not only is this necessary, but it is not enough. This motion is not enough. We need to go further than that, because having 100% renewable energy for the entire county by 2042 is not soon enough. And it is your responsibility, because our safety is in jeopardy. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yelton, and then you can go next.
Well, let's get out of the clouds just for a minute and talk about the proposal. First and foremost, I think it is a very, very ambitious goal. It is being crammed down your throats, and the goal is too fast and too short and too quick. And I think I heard him say we could put enough on top of the building to exceed the peak demand of that building, but we wanted to give the building an area to have to improve, you know, to really reach the goal. Well, if you can put more than the building needs in top of the building, why don't you put it on there? And we'll sell it to that monopoly over there, Duke, that they just referred to, that we are doing business with at the landfill? Thank you, Monopoly. Appreciate it very much. So bottom line is, it's very obvious that some people up there on that board don't like public comment on this. It's comment that they have stimulated and brought here, and tonight we have seen exactly why. We had someone on that board up there try to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting, because they're all here at the urging of somebody else. And I tell you what, folks, I feel sorry for them because they don't think they got a future. I suggest their teachers get them out of this classroom, take them over to Tennessee, let them see that great tapir in Gray, Tennessee that roamed over there. It's about eight, nine, 10 foot long. And then they go to Saltville, Virginia. You never been to Saltville, Virginia, up on 81? And you'll see woolly mammoths and mastodons and all these creatures that lived where it was cold. Folks, global warming is not global warming. It's climate change. And I had the privilege of attending the last global warming conference in Chicago, Illinois, where the hockey stick model was proven not to be true, and they changed the term to climate change. Folks, we are killing these kids with all this false information. Science does not give you the world in a handbasket. The reason we went to the moon was because we had a computer. It was Newton physics that sent us to the moon, but we didn't have enough sense to be able to calculate it. Can you see calculating with a slide rule? How many of you know what a slide rule's like? Can you see them sitting around with a slide rule trying to calculate how they're going to get to the moon? It was the computer that got us to the moon because it can make the calculations fast enough to get us there. So anytime they'd like to have a guest speaker at their clubs, I'm more than willing to come. I'll be glad to come and bring some facts. And like I said, now we see why people play politics with an issue, because that's the reason- Because that's the reason they all wanted to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, yes, sir. And who else would like to speak? Anyone else in this motion? All right, you'll be our last speaker.
My name is Daniel DeWitt. I live in Woodfin. I'm also with the Sunrise Movement. Thanks for hearing me. I appreciate the initiative in taking solar from those who believe in it. I want to say a few things. Solar might protect our future, but it's not the future. This is a technology that has existed for a long time. Jimmy Carter put solar panels on the roof of the White House before Reagan took them back off. So it's been a proven technology for a long time. I also don't think that finances is really an excuse dollar-for-dollar weighing solar panel versus fossil fuels. If you look at the externalities of fossil fuels, you have increased health spending from the children getting asthma from the pollution. You've got fires, you've got floods. Hydraulic fracturing can ruin our water that we all drink and we can't get any more fresh water. It's... If there's money for exorbitant CEO and executive pay, stock buybacks from Duke Energy, there's money to embrace something that is a long-term commitment. That's what planning is about. It's about looking at long-term spending and return on investment, which is a conservative value. I think this should be embraced and isn't really going far enough at all, but it is important to take first steps to say the symbol, to acknowledge the science that we all understand is to be true. You could find a few articles that would conflict with that and look at, you know, who is paying for that? It's probably someone from ExxonMobil, probably someone's from British Petroleum. Like there's dark money that are funding these anti-science opinions as well. The global consensus, the global consensus is that this is real. It's happening. Also about climate change, yes, there are cycles in the earth. The timescale is not anywhere close to the time that's happening right now. We're also in the first time period where temperatures are increased before carbon is increasing in the atmosphere. In the past, it's always been the opposite. So this is an unprecedented area in the Anthropocene, our new geologic era created by humans. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you everyone who came and shared your perspective tonight. All right, Commissioner, we have a motion and a second further discussion.
Yeah, I've got a couple, I'm gonna make a couple comments. I'll turn my mic on. I'm gonna make a couple comments. And so I appreciate everybody that's come out and passionately shared their opinion about this. For me, this is about stewardship. I don't share all the opinions of, you know, folks that have spoken. I'm a creationist, have different opinions, have different beliefs. However, I do believe in stewardship of the planet. It was, in my opinion, gifted to us by God Almighty. And so what I want to do as an official is balance that with a practical decision. And an RFP, all it does is go out and try to find out how much this is going to cost, right? And then it'll come back and then we'll be able to take a look at it in a practical fashion. You know, my motivation for making these decisions is not based on fear, it's based on faith. And I will be supporting going out for the RFP and then I'll be able to make a good practical decision when it comes back. I don't, I don't think that... You know, I think we're going to have to be careful as we look at each of the buildings. We're going to have to make sure that we do have the best technology, we do have the best price and that we are putting it in the best places. And I think that part of the RFP should address that when it comes back and hopefully we'll be able to have a good discussion about it. So I will be supporting the RFP.
Commissioner?
I would like to thank the kids, the young people for coming out tonight and expressing your opinion. Because what this reminds me of is when I was a student in high school, this would have been almost 60 years ago, folks. But when we went to a city council meeting here in Asheville complaining because we had as African-Americans to go to the back of the bus or we couldn't eat at lunch counters in Asheville, which we changed. We didn't give up. But don't take this in a negative way. Continue to fight for what you believe in. Because what we are leaving behind, it's going to be up to you to correct it and to clean up the mess that my generation and the ones before me are leaving, you know, for you. But continue your fight and continue to stand up for what you believe in. And I will be voting for the RFP.
I will also be supporting the RFP. I had the distinct pleasure of attending the youth climate rally at Asheville High School a number of weeks ago. And I said this there and I'll say it again tonight, that as adults, as elected officials, we should listen to our youth. And I am listening to you and as Commissioner Whiteside said, you all are cleaning up a mess that we are leaving behind and the best thing that we can do is to start cleaning it up for you. And I think this is one very small way that we can begin to do that work. And I'm very proud to support this tonight.
Chime in briefly and say I'm also proud to support this tonight and want to thank everyone who came to speak and support, especially the student leaders. The most powerful movements in our world have often been led by youth. So never let anyone tell you that anything is impossible. It's not. And want to thank Chairman Newman and Jeremiah for the hard work on this and also the community partners who are all coming to the table around this in I think very exciting ways. This is a big step forward and it's one of many, many steps we have to take. So as soon as we move forward with this, it'll be exciting to start having the next chapter of this conversation about what comes next.
I guess I'm next in line. I want to thank you kids for coming out and I agree with what Commissioner Al Whiteside said. Y'all are going to clean up our mess that we made in our ancestors. But I want y'all to think about one thing. If you believe in what you read in the paper, you see on the internet and everything, who's going to clean these solar panels up in 20 years from now? If you believe the paper, they're a 1 million square foot building in California, they cannot get rid of these solar panels. I am not a solar expert at all. I know the sun comes out, it will sunburn you, the wind will give you wind burn and the clouds make you dreary. And when it's cloudy, you're getting no energy. I have to listen to Brownie. He is a solar. And you know, I just, I guess I just hate to hear it. I'm going to support this RFP because I believe in it. I don't believe in 100%. I'd like to hear 75% or 80%. If we do 100, it is amazing to me, 100% of anything. But whenever someone says, I want to thank Brownie, but Brownie says he's not involved in this. That, you know, that's a, speaking both ways. And I'm not, Brownie, I appreciate what you're doing. We all want renewable energy. We want clean water. I want my kids, grandkids and their kids to love this area. But I also want to be very smart. What are we going to do? Because I'm afraid the mess that my grandfather made is not going to be near the mess that your grandkids are going to have to clean up. So, thank you.
Well, I guess I'm a long guy on the ship again. I was in the Navy and so was Al. I was in San Diego. I'd look out every morning across the ocean at an island. If you could see it, it's a good day. If you couldn't, it's smog. So it stayed smoggy probably 35, 40% of the time. Get up in the morning, you look out and say smog. You know, a lot of people called it fog, but it wasn't. And San Diego was now supposed to be underwater. That was in 1963. 1963. So everything that you read or people tell you is not exactly what you need to be hearing. I'm not, hey, I'm for solar. I got a friend that's got solar panels on his building, his house and got a farm and makes some money, little money with it, very little. But that's what he wanted to do for the tax breaks. A lot of people do it for tax breaks and a lot of people utilize it in other areas. But okay, everybody gets a Tesla. Well, it has to have power. Well, if the natural gas is not there to generate power, what's going to be there? If it's not a solar panel, what are you going to generate power into this Tesla to go down the road? It's totally electric. You know, I know you think I'm old and senile and that's okay. But the fact is, I drove a natural gas little car for 30,000 miles. Now I'm driving a propane car. You know, we're not going to get everybody into electric cars, period. It's not going to happen. And this 100% is never going to happen. You know, and I'm with Robert. If they made it 50% or 60%, I could probably go along with this. But when you look right now, solar panels in the United States, do anybody in the audience know how much generates power that we're getting from them today? Raise your hand if you do. 1.8%. 1.8%. Now, how are we going to get to 100% here? If you only got 1.8% in the whole United States, that's not good. Finland spent 500 and some billion dollars. Now they're having to go back to natural gas because sun goes down, as Mr. Presley says. When it goes down, you have no power. And, you know, that's what, I see a young man shaking his head, how are you going to get power if you don't have sunshine? But that's okay too. But the fact is, 1.8% solar energy in the United States of America today. That's basically what I pulled up and I looked and that's what it basically said. So all my, everybody can vote for this resolution to be brought back. But we don't have enough facts to bring it back. You know, everybody's following the deal that we're going to be gone in 10 years. I go out here and I love to look at these mountains. It's not like San Diego where you couldn't see the island. But I love looking at these mountains. And I'm proud to look at the mountains because it is clean air. It's clean. You know, we've gone a long way with the pollution of engines to be able to see that. But we're putting in more interstates. That means there are going to be more people coming through there. And I understand Sierra Club wrote a whole crew up here and, you know, good for them. But the fact is, is everything is not in that respect. It's not at all. I probably, you know, I've used up too much time, which I shouldn't have. But I can't vote for it because a simple fact is, bringing something to me, telling me that they're going to do stuff at these schools and stuff, these schools don't have any money. So somebody's going to have to tell me how they're going to get it. AB Tech, Asheville High, all of them. It's going to come out of these people's pockets. Some of them are sitting out here in the audience, it's old design. We're trying to figure out how to get the people's trash out of this county. And that's, you know, the one thing about it. And putting them on the end of the list and have to go through this, I'm sorry, but I'll be voting against it.
All right, thanks everyone for your input. Let's make a couple of last comments and then we'll vote on this, all right? One is that, you know, we do have a long way to go. In North Carolina, however, we already get about 6% of our power from solar energy in North Carolina. So it's, we've got a long way to go, but actually North Carolina, over the last seven or eight years, has actually been, outside of the state of California, a lot larger state than North Carolina, lots stronger solar resources and much more expensive electricity. We've had more solar installed in North Carolina than any other state in the country. So we're already providing leadership on this. The challenge is that we're not scaling it up at the rate that we need to, to address the climate crisis. So that's what we have to look at is how do we, how do we scale it up? Here in Buncombe County, I'm very proud that we've set this 100% renewable goal. I want to thank all the people who have fought for that. And it won't be easy. You know, we're not eastern North Carolina. We don't have tons of cheap, flat land. So we have to look at our rooftops. We have to be creative. We have to look at our landfills. We have to look at brownfields. We're going to, you know, this will, in some ways, I think it's more doable than some of the skeptics think. It's probably harder than some of the people who are, who are so eager to see it happen think it will be. But as folks said, it's, the important thing is that it's necessary. It's necessary to protect the safety of future generations. And that's our first duty. If it's not, if that's not our first duty, what are we as elected officials doing? So, and then the one last comment I want to make, you know, in terms of the importance of the public, the renewables for public sector, folks have rightly pointed out that even if the county achieves its own internal 100% renewable goal, we are a modest percentage of the whole economy in Buncombe County. Although if we start looking at our schools, our other public sector organizations, as a group, the public sector is actually a very meaningful part of the energy consumption in Buncombe County. So attacking our own and taking responsibility for our own usage, I think is a great place to prioritize. And the other thing, you know, we gave ourselves 10 years to get to the county's 100% renewable goal. I think we can do it. I think we can do it ahead of schedule. And I think the county exercising leadership to show that if you set these goals that sound so tough to get to, but actually do it and do it in a way that's physically responsible and do it ahead of schedule, it's one of the best contributions we can make to the climate movement. So thanks everyone again for being here tonight. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. No.
All right, all right. Thanks everyone for being here. All right, we've got more to do on the Waste Pro item. So Commissioner, do you want to take a five-minute break before we move on to the next item? Keep going, keep going. All right, all right. We're going to keep going. All right. Thanks for folks, if you're, if you're...
People are here, sat here all night.
That's fine, that's fine. I was just asking a question. If you are leaving, please, please be quiet on your way out because we got to move on to the next item on our agenda. Again, folks who are leaving, please, 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 you can go out in the hall and talk out there, but we got to move on to the next item. So, all right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening.
Damn, I hadn't seen you in a while, dude.
It's been a little while. It's good to be here with you. I want to thank Commissioner Frye for the comments you made earlier. Cody Gillespie was the worker that was killed last week. And our hearts, thoughts and prayers go out to his family. Just a tragic, tragic reminder of how dangerous our industry is across the board. Collections, transfer, material recovery facility, landfill, across the board is fraught with dangers. And I'm very appreciative of all the efforts our solid waste team, Waste Pro's teams put out every day to help keep our communities safe. So, and obviously the safety impacts for the new contract were thought about as we, as we structured that. And that is the topic of conversation this evening, the residential waste and recycling collections contract in unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. We are proposing tonight some contract amendment language. And this is in response to citizen feedback and concerns that we as staff have received as well as this board. And we have, staff has worked with Waste Pro to identify viable options. And we're here today to discuss a couple of these contract amendments targeted to better serve our communities. And we will roll right through and talk about the first proposed change. And this is pertaining to the bear-resistant cart options. The current contract language in relation to the bear-resistant carts is subscribers have the sole option of purchasing a bear-resistant cart from Waste Pro at $300. And we are proposing a language change there where subscribers will be able to lease the bear-resistant cart at 950 per month. That's in addition to the regular basic service of 1921 per month. Or if subscribers have purchased a certified bear-resistant cart and choose to use that, use that cart as a trade-in, as a credit, then that would essentially drop their monthly payment on the lease to 575 per month. So this is, this is language that we've, we've worked to help identify with the Waste Pro based on a lot of the concerns we heard. A lot of bear country around. So I think it's a positive step moving forward and we're happy to propose that language to provide subscribers additional options there. And please note the schedule impact. This will be about a two-week schedule impact because Waste Pro will be going back out with robocalls informing... Because Waste Pro will be going back out with robo-calls informing subscribers of the, of the option to be able to lease these containers. We want everybody to be aware of that. We're gonna focus the language, uh, to make sure that folks know, if they're happy with our cart selections at this time, no further actions needed. But please be aware that the cart selection for bear-resistant containers has changed, and it, it opens that back up to give them an option to, to participate in that. And the next item for, uh, for, for contract amendment is the elderly low-income discount program. And as you can see from the chart, the, the qualifying parameters, uh, for eligible subscribers in this program, proposed program include elderly sixty-five years or older and low income, which is defined as, uh, below a hundred fifty percent federal poverty level and a difficult driveway. So the language in the contract for premium service is a maximum up to twenty-five dollars a month. These are folks that don't necessarily qualify for the backdoor service through a doctor's note program. So that's the demographic this is targeted for, is, you know, seniors with low income that we can help subsidize that twenty-five dollar premium service per month in exchange to allow Waste Pro to be eligible for the four dollar per ton rebate program uh, with, with the tonnage that's collected in this residential contract. Uh, we, we estimate an approximate value of two hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, for this program based on the premium service and, uh, the, uh, the amount of subscribers. Seven hundred is the amount, uh, pertaining to, that's the maximum amount. It is a first-come, first-serve program. And we will be working, the, the applications will actually flow, begin at Waste, or, I'm sorry, begin at Solid Waste. So the applications filter through us. Health and Human Services team has worked with us to help define these parameters. And they will be helping us evaluate the information that's provided from the subscribers to help determine eligibility. So the next slide, we're gonna talk about some of the draft affidavit here. And, uh, as we talked about, the, uh, these are, these are check-the-box functions, obviously. Um, with a subscriber verifying that I am sixty-five years of age or older, my household income is less than a hundred fifty percent, or, uh, participation in a federal public assistance program. And also verifying that, uh, that the subscriber does not already qualify or participate in the backdoor doctor's note.
Dane, it didn't move.
Sorry about that. Rewind. Um, so, sorry about the delay there. The, uh, I am sixty-five years or older, these are check-the-box functions. Um, the, the household income is less than a hundred fi, hundred fifty percent federal poverty level or participation in a federal public assistance program. Uh, verification that the subscriber is not already participating or has, uh, has, is utilizing the, uh, the doctor's note program backdoor service, and that there is also no other able-bodied person in the household uh, that is able to move the material from the house to the collection point. So those are the primary changes. Do we have the premium service? I'll turn to Mr. Max, can you bring up the additional slides on the red line language?
So as Dane was indicating, uh, if you go to the first one, I mean, we're, we're trying to drive this not by changing the ordinance, but trying to change the contract and trying to open up, uh, options for the elderly and disabled beyond what is in the current contract in the RFP, which has a doctor's note and no other able-bodied person. It allows them to have the free backdoor service through Waste Pro. Just try to fill the gap. What we're doing now, if you can go to the first one, if you afford, Max. So in this particular situation for premium service, just trying to, uh, put some cooperation in between the county and Waste Pro to include language that where there are situations where the dual-axle trucks, the automated trucks really can't provide the service, um, contractor shall notify the county solid waste director as designated. And in such situations become evident, contractor and county shall cooperate in conducting a site assessment and reaching agreement as to the required level of service. So that might be a holler where there's ten residents up there, Waste Pro and Solid Waste might be able to go up and discuss with them how to best provide service, maybe one of those small special pickup trucks. It wouldn't necessarily be twenty-five dollars. In the normal course, it might be ten dollars per household if they do the whole. So that's one element of what the contract change we would like the board to consider. And that's separate from the rebate information that, um, Dane was just discussing. Second change for the next slide we're asking the board to approve is for the bear rollout carts. So we've heard previously that it's three hundred dollars for a new one. This, uh, puts into language in the contract that, uh, subscribers may lease a bear-proof rollout cart for nine dollars and fifty cents a month in addition to their normal subscriber fee. And in the alternative, in those situations where subscribers have purchased their own cart, they can trade it into Waste Pro. And qualifying subscribers who take advantage of that program may lease a bear-proof container upon trade-in with Waste Pro for five dollars and seventy-five cents a month for the term of five years in addition to the service option cost. Thereafter, the lease rate would match the normal rate that other subscribers would be paying. And current subscribers must request a qualifying trade-in from Waste Pro before December thirty-first. Uh, the last change, if you can go, one more, you're ahead of me, Max, is in ten point two for rebates. So again, this is for seven hundred subscribers based on Dane's programs and calculation of what his, uh, budget will allow for the county's elderly low-income discount program. So this would be available on a first-come, first-serve basis as outlined in the affidavit or eligibility form. It would apply to those persons who do not qualify for the Waste Pro, uh, doctor's note, which would be disabled and no able-bodied person. But it'd be for sixty-five years of older, uh, greater or less than a hundred fifty percent of the poverty level or recipient of federal public assistance. We have help with HHS. The form is not, uh, final at this point because we need to go through the technicalities of having proper language and release on the backside of that form. So if we have to have verification through HHS, there's an auditing procedure and process within the department so that they can make that allowance. Um, so those are the three changes we're asking the board to approve at this time. And as I indicated, it's not part of the ordinance, so the board can approve it at this time. We can make an amendment, which Waste Pro and their group have approved. And there was discussion at the, uh, pre-meeting about, are we gonna follow up with this program? Are we gonna check to see what's happened in, uh, three months or six months? So if the, if the board is willing, and I, I believe we need verification from Waste Pro, we could add provision to the rebate section that would say that the parties agree to review the effectiveness of, of the elderly low-income discount program for subscriber eligibility and benefit on an annual basis. That way, we could see if the seven hundred, uh, level mark works, if that needs to be contracted or expanded. Uh, because currently, we don't know how many people are gonna take advantage of the Waste Pro doctor's note or handicapped information and, and do whatever verification Waste Pro's gonna require that they have no other able-bodied person, uh, able to carry it down. So we don't know how many people will be eligible for that likewise. We don't know how many people who may be eligible will reply for this rebate program. So that's what we are attempting to do to fill the couple holes and concerns that we've heard here recently. And be happy to try to answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks for this. Just a point of clarification under, um, the premium service, uh, the changes to the premium service subsection?
Yes.
So this describes a scenario where a, a customer might wanna have basic service, but the terrain of where they live doesn't allow that? Is that accurate? And then?
Essentially, I think it's, it's easier to say, if you're thinking of premium service and how this might work, where it's, the dual trucks don't necessarily work. And this process is going on informally now, because I know our, our staff and Waste Pro staff are meeting onsite at various areas and saying, well, what can we do to accommodate this situation?
Okay, I just wanna make sure, the, I think these are some of the folks that we're hearing from, and I wanna make sure I can give good information. So in a scenario like this where there's not a good, clean, obvious fit on the first pass, so then the county staff and Waste Pro are meeting onsite to assess what options exist, and the residents are being informed of those options, and then can select to participate in the option that's available, or again, can select to opt out of Waste Pro.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure, sort of in layperson terms, I can
I think you're exactly correct.
Communicate this. Okay, thank you.
I think there's been some confusion, honestly, from my view, as, uh, descriptions in the contract in the RFP where, okay, you have to place your, your bins down by the mailboxes. Well, in many situations, it takes that site evaluation from county staff and Waste Pro staff to say, well, you know, we can make it work with this truck, or it's actually wide enough to have an automated truck. So it's not automatic, and everybody's willing and able to work with these, with the customers as best they can.
If, if I would lease one of the bear-proof cans, at the end of five years, is the can mine?
That would just, if you, I believe this, well, what the, and I want, don't wanna speak for Chip, but no, it's gonna be leased forever, but it's gonna be Waste Pro's problem if the wheel breaks off or the top breaks off or a bear tears it apart. They'll replace it and the lease continues.
But what I'm saying, though, at the end of five years, if we don't renew the contract with them, are they gonna pick up the cans? Because if you look at it, I've already paid for it. Uh, based on this five years, it would be five hundred and seventy dollars, so they made their money.
Yes, sir. Uh, good after, good evening. Uh, on that, uh, the, the reason why the, the lease, the lease plan is as it is, is we take care and maintain the can throughout the entire time of the service. And so that's why there is that option, that you can purchase the can, if you like. Uh, there is that option. But for us to maintain it, you know, just like for right now, uh, for example, we, we charge like thirty-eight dollars, uh, just for, uh, a, a delivery or a removal. And so, you know, there is a service fee to go out, and there is a service fee to, you know, make a, a service at, at someone's residence. But with the lease option, there is no service fee. So that, that helps us cover our costs during that period of time. You know, the bear carts are, uh, much more labor-intensive. You know, those locks have to work, uh, the wheels, all that sort, those things that we have to address. So there's a cost to the upkeep of those cans throughout the time.
How about for the regular cans? Now, I probably have a regular can. Do you charge anything for that if, uh, I need service on it?
No, sir.
You don't charge anything?
No, sir.
Good, okay.
So, yeah, let me follow up, because, uh, I wanna make sure I'm hearing it clear, as Commissioner White said. The regular service, you do keep them cans up, too, if they're destroyed?
That is correct.
Okay.
We keep them up.
And now getting back to the bear-proof and with what, uh, Al was saying. So after the five years, y'all own the can or continue paying the nine dollars, right?
The lease continues.
The lease continues for ten years.
As long as we have an agreement with the county.
If they continue service, they continue paying the lease on that bear.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, I don't wanna make nothing no more complicated, because I appreciate everything y'all. Y'all have been over backwards. But in Al's, I think what Al was trying to say is after five years, if they, I, I look at it, they have the option to renew a new bear-proof or Waste Pro give them that one and say, you're responsible for the wheels and the lids and everything. Now, is that kinda where you was going, Al?
So I think both of you get in the weeds, if you want my opinion.
Oh, I know we are, and I appreciate this, this something probably, yeah, we need to hear from the people, like I said, but, you know, we have talked about this a whole lot, but, boy, I tell you, we need to dot every i and cross every t here, and, and y'all have been over backwards, I, I know. And we've listened, and the people are listening, but I kinda think, I'd like to just see a little bit more about, you pay for that trash can, five hundred and seventy dollars, a three hundred dollar can, that it'll be their responsibility, or they renew the lease, that they wanna keep that can. I mean,
I mean, the, the other thing, though, I mean, if you lease anything, you're, you're, I'm paying, I'm paying for your ability to use your cash, may not use my cash. Just like leasing a car. If I go lease a car, which I'm not gonna do, because I like to own them, you know, is, at the end of that lease, you don't own it.
But you have the option at the end of that lease to own it.
And you do with them, three hundred bucks.
You have to, or re-lease it, correct? I just wanna make sure I understand, 'cause I'm, a lot of people asking me these questions.
So there are two options. There's an option to purchase the can, or an option to lease the can.
At the start.
The lease, the lease continues. So, you know, and the reason why the lease continues, the, the can maybe get, maybe it gets damaged, okay? Two years down the road, we might be replacing that can once or, or twice, we, we don't know.
Yeah.
And so there are a lot of risks with leasing the can, and that's why the rates are what they are. But they, the residents definitely have the option to purchase the can.
And we're talking about a small amount, and I'm gonna shut up.
It's a small amount, yeah. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands what they're getting at.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, we do want to take public comment on this item. Let's just go ahead and, let's just go ahead and hear from folks on this. So, uh, Terry, you wanna go first?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, commissioners, my name is Terry Finch. First, I would like to offer our condolences to the family of the Waste Pro employee who was involved in an accident this past week. Now, we want to urge this commission not to approve the first change proposed, which is the modification to Article A, Section six point one point four of the franchise service contract with Waste Pro because of the negative financial impact that it would have on the residents of Buncombe County. Waste Pro has over forty-four thousand subscribers in Buncombe County, according to their website. Johnny Lee, the division manager, has told us that about twenty percent of the county would be affected in areas where they cannot utilize the standard dual-axle automated trucks. Twenty percent of forty-four thousand is eight thousand eight hundred Buncombe County households that are going to be affected. Now, at the cap rate of twenty-five dollars per month for the premium service, this amounts to two million six hundred and forty thousand dollars per year, which will be the financial burden that Buncombe County residents will have to bear. That's in addition to the nineteen dollars and twenty-one cents that they have to pay for the basic service. If they reduce the fee to, say, fifteen dollars per month for the premium service, this still amounts to one million five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars per year of a financial burden to Buncombe County residents. This seems like an unconscionably high amount of money that Waste Pro expects Buncombe County residents to pay. Approving this modification to the contract would be to the detriment of many of Buncombe County residents. Therefore, the commissioner should vote against it. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else?
Of that millions of dollars that they're collecting, how much do they have to pay for tip fees to the landfill that comes back to the county? Because they do have to pay the tip fee when they pick the stuff up. So you gotta, you gotta figure that in, and that's one of the things we need to ask them. They can tell you what it is, probably. You'd be surprised what it costs them to dump it and bury it in a landfill. But my comment has something to do about what this board and politics can do. When I called the DOT and I asked them to lower the speed limit on Jupiter Road to thirty-five, because it's very, very highly developed now, and I'd appreciate it if Brownie and you would listen to me, because this is gonna take all the power you guys have got. Because DOT told me that they'd already reduced the speed limit to forty-five, and that's all they'd do. And it was, I said, well, we've got cars flying up and down here. They said, it's an enforcement problem. So I called the Highway Patrol, and I told them that DOT was blaming them for all of the speeding on Jupiter Road. Folks, there was a Waste Pro employee got hit on Jupiter Road, and I talked to Chip, and he's telling me that if his garbage truck is parked in the other lane a little bit, so somebody can't go around him and kill a guy picking up your trash, guess what they do to him? They fight him for being on the wrong side of the road, right, Chip?
Yeah, we, that's staying in our lane.
They gotta stay in their lane. So this is an issue that our elected officials need to address. A garbage truck is a service truck, just like a fire truck. And all those kids that was here that left, most of them have And all those kids that was here that left, most of them have, they want to get rid of the garbage. So we need to figure out a way to solve that problem. That's one man broke up real bad and one man killed by drivers flying on the road. When they see a trash truck, they should treat it like a Highway Patrol car. They should slow down, shouldn't they? So guess who can do that? Y'all start pushing to get that legislation done in Raleigh, that a trash truck is just like a fire truck. And let them have a light or whatever is necessary and require it, so that we don't get anybody else killed picking up your trash, okay? So do something out of this meeting and listen to me one time, if you would. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Justin McVay. I'm your District Wildlife Biologist for the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. I get about 600 calls a year about bears. The story is always the same. I've got bears getting into my garbage cans, bird feeders. I've got kids, you know, can you come relocate these bears? And so I've learned a lot about trash cans in the past little bit. That's part of my little spiel is, remove your bird feeders, put your garbage up, get a bear-proof trash can. So I'm excited about Waste Pro and the trash cans, a little concerned about the purchase option. Most cans that you buy come with a warranty, so I'm not sure if that warranty will transfer from re-rig to the person that buys that can. I'm guessing that's what the lease option, which is really a rent option, is, is kind of doing. Regardless, we need bear-proof trash cans, so just wanted to give my support to that. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks. All right, anyone else? Uh, yes.
Hi, my name's Meg Trobridge, and I live at the end of Chuns Cove Road. And I didn't really expect to talk, but, but we've been having Waste Pro come pick up our trash since 1997, I think. And it doesn't seem like there's been that much trouble, except for bears. And now, all of a sudden, they're saying that it's going to cost extra money, the premium charge, to, you know, to come up the same driveway, the same road that they've been coming up for the last over 20 years. And so I'd like to, I, I don't understand why they can all of a sudden designate, "Well, you guys are going to be, you know, you guys are under this premium charge deal, and you now have to pay all this extra money." So I, I, it doesn't seem like all these i's have been dotted and the t's have been crossed about all the issues involved. I mean, the people here are of the youngest in our neighborhood. I'm 64, and I'm one of the younger people, and trying to get those big new trash cans down the road and back up the road, you can't get it, we can't, I'm not strong enough to get it in my car to take it down to the end of the road. It's about a quarter of a mile. So it just seems like there's this arbitrary, you know, decision, "Oh, you won't, we can't come up your road anymore." And our neighborhood is very upset about it. So thanks for listening.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, Commissioner. Yeah, I'm coming up.
Yeah, my name's George Trobridge, up at the end of Chuns Cove Road with my wife. I, I'm trying to think of a little bit lighter way to attack this. I don't, I don't know how you guys put up with this. I mean, it's the first time you've ever seen me here, but how you can stand nights like this, got to be a little bit tough. So I thought I might drop a couple of tips about, you know, bears and garbage cans. They've been really tough on me, you know, and I spend most of my Thursday nights stuffing garbage in there, you know, in the two pails, right? I got blue garbage and white garbage, and blue stuff gets recycled. You all know that. But the thing about it was that, you know, those bears kept getting in, and I did everything I could to top those cans. I mean, I had stretch rope and tires and chains and stuff, and my neighbors, they used to sit on them. You know, if you had a metal pail, they'd sit on a pail, and that's the way to get the top off. But I, I, I figured, I've worked on this for 20 years, and this came out about two years ago. And another thing that does the trick, and I will share this with you only because you're the county commissioner. If it was anybody else, I wouldn't tell them. But the trick to this whole thing is ammonia. You put a little ammonia in that garbage pail, and they'll open it up, maybe, and if, the good ones can smell it right away. If they open the top, you know, forget it. And you don't have to give these guys $300. They're making plenty of money. They are making money. I looked at, look at their, look at their website. I mean, this they got, look at this, look at these trucks. They're coming in with trucks with what? Extra wheels and stuff. I mean, they must be making all kinds of money, and yet they're clogging up our roads, so we got to carry all this junk down the road, you know? We're going to have a pile of about 50 pile, 50 garbage cans sitting down at the end of Chuns Cove Road. But anyway, look, I just want to share a little bit with, congrats, I, I don't, again, I don't know how you, I don't know how you guys make it. But thanks. It's nice to have an opportunity to talk with you.
Wow. They say just two or three paragraphs, couldn't they?
Okay. All right. All right, Commissioner.
Okay, I got a question. I'm just, Dane, can you come back up, okay?
Yes, sir.
One is, you know, in arbitrary charge of $25, I can assure you, people will go outside of their minds calling us and everything. And there's surely the goodness that y'all aren't going to be doing that, that Waste Pro's not going to be doing that. I mean, I think of my driveway. There's a, there's mailboxes at the end of it, and these cans are going to have to be set, not on the main road, but on, in, in that driveway. And so if that arm can't reach them, they're going to have to get out and move them and to where that arm can grab them. You know, and I'm assuming that that is not a hardship, you know, and that a lot of these, that that would not be extra service.
Correct. And, you know, obviously, talking about automated services, that's been a huge focus of the contract. We're excited about that, the expansion thereof.
Yeah.
This is not 100% automated. It's not. And there's areas where it's going to take a smaller truck to get to.
That's right.
And I'm, I'm going to let Chip talk a little bit about premium service. That's okay, real quick.
So are you, are you saying that, that, you know, if they got to go, if they got to use that smaller truck, people aren't going to pay $25 a head to use that smaller truck?
It, it is side assessment-based. There are so many different situations where, you know, currently, in the contract, there's a lot of folks that are getting more of a backdoor service, that, that they've never paid for that additional service. We see that happening across the board, and that's something that Waste Pro did not pursue throughout the 10-year contract. That was something they told us a couple of years ago, that something was going to have to change in order for them to financially be able to continue doing the collections. So there, there will be some changes there. I think it's a smaller percentage than what we're talking about on the premium service side. And the program we talked about earlier today, you know, folks with, you know, the senior citizenship, you know, the longer driveways, the low income, those are, those are targeted demographics we're out there trying to, trying to help with these programs. So again, side assessments are happening now, and we're talking through with subscribers the options for their situations, so.
Dane, is it, I mean, if the number right, is it 8,000 customers that can be affected by this? Is it that many?
Could y'all talk about that? Because that's, you know, that's a big number, right? So I think we're trying to get a sense for what's the scope of this, yeah.
Right. Chip, you want to speak a little bit to the estimated number we've been talking about?
Yeah, you know, currently on our, on our scout trucks, which are pickup trucks, we have, I believe, right around 1,300 customers that are serviced by those. Quite a few of those trucks or, or those customers that are serviced with those trucks will more than likely be premium service residents, okay? And you're talking about trucks with four-by-four vehicles. Some of the other trucks, just like we were, some of the residents talked specifically about Chuns Cove. I'll speak specifically to that, because I have been out to that location. And I have talked, and actually, I'm coming back out Thursday, and with Dane, and we're going to meet with some of the residents right there on site. And so what we have, you know, in the contract, it does specify that, is it private lane or private road, subject to...
Private driveway.
That's what's in the contract?
They're on a private road.
You're on, they're on a private road, and the contract says private driveway. And that's some of the things that we did want to clear up, is the language. But let me speak a little further. They do have a road. It does clearly mark, you know, private, whatever is at the bottom. And we have given them options so far. We've said, "Hey, you know, we can send our regular trucks up there. We can absolutely do that. There is space for that. We can do that, and you can pay the same rate." The issue with that is, it's a private road, okay? And, you know, over time, that road will not withstand the weight of our trucks, okay? For years, as Dane mentioned earlier, we provided more of a premium service with a smaller vehicle. Was 11-ton or 11 or 13-yard truck that has been going up there. Our standard trucks now are approximately 28 yards, okay? So you're talking about a considerably smaller truck that has been going up there and servicing them for no additional charge. So right now, the options that we did present was, hey, we can go up there with the regular truck, the same truck, and charge you the same price, and as long as you're good and you're going to take care of your road and you give us a waiver on that, we're fine with that, okay? Or if you do want a smaller vehicle, a premium service vehicle, then there would be some charge, okay? And we modified that charge to $15 per home, just to be, because we do want to be reasonable. We want to work with the community and be reasonable. And so those are options that we provided for that community, and we'll continue to work with them for something that works.
So that's $5 a month?
I'm sorry? No, 15 additional dollars.
And folks in the audience, we just want to talk to the person at the podium for now, okay?
Is that $15 a month or 15 a quarter?
Per month. Per month. And so with the RFP, you know, our number for premium service was $25. And, you know, we modified that, and that was two options that they had. So they, they can absolutely do the regular service with the same truck if they, if they so choose to.
I'd like to ask, but Terry, you need to come up to the, to the podium, okay? But if you'd like to comment on that, I think we're trying to get everyone's take on these issues. So come up to the podium, and if you'd like to respond to that same issue, that's fine.
I read the two options that Mr. Gingles offered us. The first option was, we'll bring our big automated trucks on your road, but you have to find, sign a release of any, for any damages that our truck might have on the road. That was the option. You said we had to sign a release. Now, we have like 17 homeowners, and there is no way, I know that we, all 17 would agree to sign the release, okay? The second option was a reduced premium service for $15. But the first option was that we had to sign a release, giving them, you know, no liability at all for any damage, whatever, that the trucks would cause. And that is a problem, giving that kind of open-ended release.
Okay. All right, thanks for, thanks for sharing that. All right.
Now, you're talking about the truck going up that private drive. It's not the same truck you're using right now. The new one-arm will be a heavier truck, correct?
Oh, the, the one-arms in areas where their basic service is routed, yeah, they're, they're a much heavier truck, yes.
Right. And I mean, I can understand the weight and how asphalt is, and I would be very careful about wanting that truck, especially in 90-degree weather, just ripping the asphalt. I, I mean, I do a lot of construction work, and I know anytime I get a concrete truck or someone coming in to do work for me, I have to sign a release that they are not responsible for my driveway, my bridge, or anything if they have trouble. So I understand where they're coming from. That's just not Waste Pro. I think that's any big company there. So I just wanted to clarify that, that I'm on your side, that, you know, there, there's a lot of legality in some of this stuff.
And that's just, just like me. Y'all tried to put something totally together. Can I agree with the, was it 700?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if that's going to cover it. That's still, you know, and then when you say, you know, the first 700 to come, well, a bunch of them may not know. As I said before, if it ends up costing the county some money, we spend on, you know, hell, we just decided we're going to spend money on solar panels, why, why can't we help the, the people? These people, you know, if they can come up with $10 or something, but you've got so many people that cannot get, and they, you know, I'm still not happy with this trash can deal. 33-gallon trash can is a perfect size, perfect for most people that don't have a family. And I'm not done, I'm not done with Chip on that at all. This is... You got other people that, you know, I got them today and I sent them to you, Dane. They can't, you know, reverend it. They can't get their trash down the hill to the road. So I don't see where this is going to work yet. And I'm sorry to say that, Chip, and I'm sorry to say that, but we've got to figure out exactly what we need. If the, you know, if we come together tonight with 700 and it don't work, we've got to come up with a different number, you know? And I don't care if it costs the county some money, because it...
Mike?
Yes.
In our pre-meeting, that was brought up, about the 700, that it's only like 350 or 400 right now, and y'all was going to keep us in touch.
Absolutely.
If it was getting close to the 700 to make adjustments.
I can't, everything that I see, and I was not in the pre-meeting, that's what these meetings are for, I thought.
Well, now you know.
These meetings are for what we're talking about. These people are here to listen to what we're talking about. So the pre-meeting is not exactly, they're hearing something that they didn't hear in a pre-meeting. And the fact is, well, the fact is, is these people sitting here in the audience wouldn't hear it.
That's why I brought it in.
So, the pre-meeting, that's, you know, it's a pre.
All right.
It's not a meeting.
All right, all right. Hold on. Does somebody want to make a motion to do something?
I am, okay, I, I think that, you know, what was brought up tonight is very real for folks that live on that road. And I think that, you know, Waste Pro's going to have to work with them and, and, you know, with some kind of amiable solution. I don't think that, I don't think that that is enough for us to alter the entire contract. You know, it is their job to hold Waste Pro accountable for any exceptions. If an exception comes through and somebody's not getting treated properly, then it is, it is, it is up to us to enforce the contract. And actually, we have...
But to be, but to be, can I just stay on that point for a second?
You sure can.
The, the decision points, though, if we approve the policy, we're not making the site-specific decisions. But, but I want to be clear on what the process is. Would our staff and Waste Pro have to concurrently agree? It's not just Waste Pro. It has to be kind of a, they have to jointly, so the county does have a voice in that process. Not, not necessarily the commission, but the county does.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, for the premium, for the premium service site assessment, it says cooperate in conducting a site assessment.
Okay. Okay, so, the only thing that I would like to see maybe in that is the 700 number, that it could be altered. You know, we got a number. I'm sure it can. I mean, that'd be up to this board to approve or disapprove at a later date. But that's why we're indicating that we want to have some kind of annual review or come back in six or eight months and see where we go. But right now, what we are asking for is that the board approve those three contract changes that I mentioned. And if you want to put in some milestone dates, then I can give you some other language to add to the language which we presented. We're just asking to include that in the contract as a modification. Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I was going to make a motion, but I would like to put, I would like to put the dates in there. And, and as I'm prefacing this, you know, the motion, I want to thank, I want to, I do want to thank Commissioner Fryer for a few meetings ago, asking, you know, more folks to come in and give us some, some additional input. folks to come in and give us some, some additional input and, and Waste Pro responding to the hardship part of it, you know, that we are even talking about seven hundred people, you know, and, you know, I want to, I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, so. But I, I want to make a motion to approve those, those changes in a, in April. It starts in January, right?
January first, yes, sir.
And an April one review. To see where we're at on the, whether there's premium or, you know, negotiated, and the seven hundred that Commissioner Fryer was concerned about, that we could-
So the motion is to approve the recommended changes, but it's saying to our staff, in April, we want to, we want to get an update and review of where we're at.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. April first, yeah. Yeah, because it starts, it starts in January, doesn't start till January.
An update on the, how many is going after the seven hun, I mean, up to seven hundred?
Yeah, we will.
April, but that's already the first quarter gone. They're signing up now, right?
I need to ask if there's a second to the motion.
Second.
All right. So you, you'd like to have some additional feedback sooner?
If we get closer to that seven hundred, we can come back, but they can't sign up now until we have this program change and this contract change, so they're not signing up yet. Yes.
Okay. Further comments on the, the motion? I do want to, yeah, if you'd like to, please, you've set through all this, so feel free to let us know what you think. We're trying to, trying to get this right.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Reinke and I really appreciate your time. I know that this has been a long meeting with a lot of important information and I just want to pass on, and this won't be my neighborhood's experience solely. I think that that will be experienced by other neighborhoods as well. So in our neighborhood, you, everybody has to bring their trash down their driveway to get onto the private road. If we take the redefined curbside service, we're going to be taking it, some of us, a half a mile. So the carts don't fit in our car and where, where the mailboxes are is in right-of-way and the easement is fifteen feet on either side. Well, the property that that, who belongs to that right-of-way is not a Waste Pro customer and there isn't really room without that person doing some expensive landscaping that they would have to do on their own, removing kind of large rocks. There's no place for us to even put them. So they're going to be right by the road. And they, as far as the DOT, you know, a car rams into them, it comes up over the car's windshield and bangs and there's going to be metal on it. So I, I think that just saying that they're going to be down by the mailboxes in a lot of instances isn't going to work, even with the DOT. I don't know how we would, we, would we have to get a right-of-way to even have the mailboxes down there? I mean, to have the trashcans down there. So it's just an added little twist to when you are decision-making and I appreciate how cautious and how much thought that you're giving this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ronnie?
Yes, or Robert and Jasmine.
Yeah. This is just a joke. The two of y'all that spoke about, y'all feel sorry for us? We spent thousands of dollars to get this job here. So we punished ourselves.
But we punish ourselves, y'all were not punishing us.
So I feel like each time we have these conversations, they get more focused on problem-solving for the members of our community for whom the system's not quite working yet. So I want to say thank you to county staff, the folks at Waste Pro, and I really want to say thank you to members of the community who keep persisting and saying, you might be getting closer, but you're not quite there yet. So I think there's a lot about this that I do like and feel like it feels like a step forward and allows us to start fixing problems for some of the people we have, we know have problems, but I'm also still continuing to hear from people who have new and different kinds of problems. So I think our work is not done and I, for me, the caveat feels like we, it seems very likely that we may need to do something like this again in the future as we get a clearer understanding about the situations where the system is just not working. And I also think it's important to just be really honest about the fact that there probably are going to be people in the community who just face a very tough choice, whether they're going to pay more, which is a hard thing to do, or whether they're going to leave Waste Pro as a customer and figure out another way to deal with their trash. And I think no matter how many solutions we come up with, there's still going to be some people who just unfortunately have to make that very tough decision. But our goal is to try to reduce the number of people that have to, at the end of the day, make that, make that call. So that's kind of where I stand on things tonight and I just have a feeling we're going to keep talking about this for, for, for many months to come.
I think you're right. Other comments? I do have just, I have one and it's, it's kind of, it might seem small, but going back to the question I had earlier about, I'm for the rebates for the seven hundred, we'll evaluate it, may need to modify it, but I am a little concerned about the language that says that the, the last sentence in that section says, "Rebates for residential tonnage will remain at the current rate of four dollars per ton during the term and any renewal terms of this franchise agreement." So I guess my, my only question is, you know, if this franchise agreement does get renewed five years out in the future, I mean, that's a long time, we don't know how long that renewal will be for, so I guess I just wonder if we shouldn't give ourselves some ability to just look at that specific number? I mean, if everything's going great, presumptively, we'd want to continue something like this forward, but it seems like we're kind of locking ourselves into a specific number for a very, very long period of time and I just wonder if we should give ourselves a little bit of flexibility about how we decide to handle that during a renewal, you know, negotiation process?
Maybe we can say at the current rate, which is what we have set now, instead of adding the dollar amount, it is the current rate.
But we have only one renewal, is it one renewal?
Two.
Two?
Two, two-year terms. Okay.
It's in the dollar amount, we can just say whatever that going rate is that we set for other haulers.
We could do the current rate, but we just don't want it to fall below the four dollars. So for some reason, if the rate rebate changes to fifty cents a ton and we're offering two hundred thousand dollars of service, you know, we, we'd be taking a bath, so we, we don't want to do that either. So if it could say, you know, not to drop below that and stay consistent with the rebate program, that, that would be, be good.
Okay, or, and now, let me just ask, I mean, I'm kind of raising this question, but is, if, is there a reason to think that it's fine to just leave it that, that specific? Or what do you think?
I think we can leave it, instead of saying for the renewal terms, just leave it for this five-year term and every renewal comes up, we will then reevaluate at that time.
It would renew, right, or?
We, we can evaluate it at whatever that going rate is at that time, but leave it for this current term.
All right, so, so with the, yeah, if you-
Take it out.
All right, so it would just stop during the term period and when we renew, we'll look at it, so.
Do you have that, Mr. Frue? You want to read it off?
I think it just, so I do, and I think part of the concern was is, it's not just for Waste Pro's benefit, because if we opened the door for this program for people seven hundred more or less that might want into that program, if we stop it in five years, we might have to relaunch it in the same manner as before. I mean, that, that was the thought process, right or wrong?
You're not talking about that, you're only talking about-
Plus, the, the rebate program is bigger than Waste Pro, it's like what we do for all commercial haulers, so if we could top it at this renewal, this period, and we'll discuss it and if the rate changes, we can discuss it going forward for other renewal periods.
Sure. We could just stop it at, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, at the current rate per ton during the term period.
And, and if it's successful, presumptively, if it's renewed, it would be, it'd be renewed as part of that. We, I, I-
We have a six, six or nine-
Maybe you've got, maybe you've got a-
Yeah, we have, we have at least six months before the end of the term when we would start to talk about the renewal, so.
And I'm sorry, we're just words missing this, words missing this on the spot, but we literally are voting on this language, so what, what if we said, and it, and it may be renewed during any renewal term and then therefore, you know, we, if it's going great, we'll probably do it, but just, I just, I'm just concerned about kind of tying our hands a bit. So would that legally work, Mr. Frue?
It would.
Okay.
It would, it'd just take positive action of the board, yes.
So to the maker of the motion, the language would be, this is the rate during the current term and may be renewed during any renewal of the franchise service contract?
Does Clark have that?
I will get it in the video.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And who seconded the motion, Mr. Presley? Is that accepted with you? Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments?
No, I think the review is clear and we just, you know, move on.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all right, thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Okay, we do not have any board appointments to consider tonight. Oh, actually, sorry, sorry about that. They're buried under here. Hang on, let me go there. All right, Health and Human Services Board, there are four vacancies.
Okay, I'll, I'll nominate Linda Weldon, Jesus Amadeo Valdez. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, on the County Board of Adjustments, there are two reappointments.
I nominate Andy Ball and Dorothy Cordell.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Women's Commission, there's eight vacancies.
I nominate Paula Adler and Sarah Erdahl.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we come, yes, sir.
So there's two more open there, will we do them later on? Is this normal that they can fill their board up?
Yes, sir. They have decided to go ahead and fill these two positions and they'll continue to advertise for the other two positions. So they wanted to go ahead and fill these two positions currently.
Okay, thank you. All right, we now come to, to public comment and we'll start with Vicki Meath. And we'll go to Mr. Yelton next and then you may go third.
Hi, my name is Vicki Meath. I am a Buncombe County resident and the Director of Just Economics and I am speaking here tonight on behalf of Just Economics as well as many partner organizations that we've been working with over time. And I want to start off by thanking you for approving the funding for the extension of the art system up Leicester in, near, in and around the Irwin School District. I feel like this addresses an acute need as well as provides services to residents in that area. We have a similar acute need up in the Reynolds District and there's been a group, family to family, that has been working on that for a number of years and we're in partnership with that organization to ask you to consider creative ways to solve the transportation issues of the residents in that area as well as the students that attend the, the middle and high school in the Reynolds School District. I also just want to encourage the commissioners to think about transportation needs in this county. What are your role, what is your role in addressing those transportation needs and consider creative solutions as well as continued investments? You heard many of the Sunrise youth today mention being here in solidarity with Just Economics because we know that increased transport, public transportation options helps to address climate change. We also know that we are in, we are in partnership with many organizations that are working with low-income individuals because we know that there's a growing affordability problem in our county and that public transportation helps alleviate some of the costs that are making this county a difficult place, place for people to afford to live. So transportation, public transportation, investing in public transportation, whether it's in the art system, mountain mobility, the Trailblazer system, or connection and combination of, of these services is important to helping us address a multiple of needs and, and growing needs. And so I ask you tonight to, to continue to explore ways that we can invest in public transportation in this county. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know it's late, but Chairman Newman, I had to say something good about you because I was a little hard on you a while ago. You said something back when we were talking and I think it's extremely important about these priorities you all were going through. You said we need to look at what we fund in terms of our strategic goals. Yes, that is a criteria that's going to have to be paramount in any committee that brings a grant to you. And guess whose responsibility it's going to be to be sure that it fits your number top priorities? It's going to be your responsibility, not that committee. It's your responsibility to see that it does and that was a very, very smart, sharp statement and I'm glad you said it. I also want to remind you that it takes two commissioners to take public comment if somebody's trying to control public comment. And also, your solid waste contract, trust me, folks, you all need to pull that contract out and read it. Because if something goes on and you don't like what they're doing, you start finding them a hundred dollars for every time they leave a trash can sitting on the side of the road and guess what's going to happen? They're going to beg you to get out of the contract. So you got the power in that contract. It was really, really strong and I strongly suggest that each member of this board read it. Now, you know, we heard that we've got to have help the poor people and the poor people are growing in Buncombe County. Why are the poor people growing in Buncombe County? The tax burden. The larger the tax burden gets, the more people you get depending on the government to survive. So then you increase the taxes again. And just tonight now, you put three million aside for nonprofits and you're going to have over three million for solar panels? That's six million. Eh, what's a million here and a million there? Just, it's just money, it's just my money, the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
All right. And does any, yeah, come on up, anyone else want to speak? All right, Jerry, you can go next and then you may go after Mr. Rice.
Hi, my name is Deja Harris. I am a Buncombe County resident and I am actually wanting to bring to your attention some issues with the crossroads development off of South Bear Creek. Excuse me. So I am one of the teachers that support my students who came up here tonight, so thank you very much for taking time to listen to them. But my background is in water prior to teaching and there are some concerns with the development plants that are posted. So right now, the crossroads development plan is taking behind the church along Harmony Creek that then runs into the French Broad River. So one of the concerns is that they take half of the wetland that's there and then according to their plans, they are mitigating it. However, there is not sufficient mitigation on their plans. They have sufficient wastewater and sewer treatment, which for, you guys know, any road runoff goes then straight into our public waterways. And so without slowing the water down, it's going to increase the sedimentation, which is one of the number one water pollutants that we have in this part of the state. So would really like to draw your attention as those plans continue and they keep bringing them back up to you guys, to really address the fact that they need to kind of really look at where is this water going that's going to fall on the site. Couple of things that they can do that if you have recommendations to bring to them is to decrease their impervious surfaces, so you can add in pavers, you can add permeable asphalt, ways again that slow the water down to allow it to be taken up by the soil. Again, by doing that, you reduce the amount of sedimentation that ends up in our streams. The second big real issue on that plan is just the traffic. We all live in the county, we all drive in the county, we know that traffic is increasing, frustrations levels are increasing. South Bear Creek, as it goes from Brevard Road to Sandhill Road, I live off Sandhill Road, that is my main way to get to work, is really kind of iffy. Some days it takes me twenty minutes to get home, some days it will take me over an hour. And that is folks who are avoiding the interstate for good reasons, because they're stuck on the highway. But South Bear Creek on its own is too narrow to sup- But South Bear Creek on its own is too narrow to support that level of transportation, especially if you take into delivery trucks. The South Bear Creek-Wendover-Sandhill intersection is a five-point intersection that, right now, with vegetation growing up, there are sight-blind points that you just cannot see around. So I'd also like to possibly propose to you all to consider looking at a five-point traffic circle in that area to reduce the congestion, or some other form of addressing that five-point intersection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of Board. I think Waste Pro there was an issue with people picking up on the little trucks. Believe it or not, I was sitting in the window, eating lunch, and here comes a little truck... A little truck by the house, five different times up the same road. The big trucks might not be the good thing for a road, but the amount of traffic a smaller truck's going to do, that's another safety problem as well. But the increase of bear activity in our community as well is really increased. So the more building going on and the more stuff going on, there's going to be more bear activity as well. So it is a big issue, and I think reviewing this plan, you're doing a good job on bringing that up. The other thing on the nonprofits, the presenter tonight, Rachel, I would appreciate the board and the county manager looking into her presentations. I've followed her many times, and I cannot understand her. I can hear her back there. I can hear, but the way her voice is going up and down, and the way she talks, and it sounds like she's talking through her teeth and not opening her mouth, and it's hard for me to hear, and I've had the others back there asking me the same thing. So I would appreciate if you'd address that question, because it is hard to follow her, and so I can understand her. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kate Millar, and I'm also here to express concerns about the proposed crossroads development in West Asheville. And I realize that it is the Board of Adjustment, not you all, who will vote on this conditional use application, but you need to hear the problems with this situation and work to change the conditions that have led to this. This development includes over 800 residential units. The size of this is unprecedented in western North Carolina, and it's three times larger than the typical multifamily development complex. Plus, it includes over 120,000 square feet of retail, office, and self-storage space. It is being fit on a winding, two-lane road, South Bear Creek Road, that has a crumbling bridge at one end, and the coming of the I-26 connector project, another hotel, and another coming apartment complex on the other end. And the closest neighborhood services are accessed through an existing RS4 neighborhood's residential streets. I'm really dismayed that a project of this scale can slide into Buncombe County on a two-lane road adjoining low-density residential neighborhoods and only be subject to the vote of the Board of Adjustment. A project of this size needs public input. These parcels are surrounded on three sides by the city of Asheville. They'll burden the city services, roads, neighborhoods, and parks, yet not be subject to any city oversight or taxation. That is wrong. This project in no way fits the description of what public service zoning was intended to serve. I believe in infill development, and I think it can be done well and be beneficial, but this is not it. The infrastructure surrounding these parcels is already inadequate. Adding a traffic light will not mitigate the impacts of thousands of more car trips there a day. Public safety for those living in this area will be sacrificed for the developers' profits. The environmental impacts could also be disastrous. Currently, this undeveloped land mitigates flooding of the Hominy, is nearly half in the 100-year floodplain, stores and treats stormwater, buffers the interstate, provides wildlife habitat, and importantly, it provides green space in an already densely populated area. Once it's graded, piped, and built, we will never get that green infrastructure back. The crossroads land contains a key area needed for the Greenway master plan, but there's no commitment by the developer to build a Greenway to county standards, or more importantly, connect it to the existing adjacent Hominy Creek Greenway. An unconnected gravel trail does not meet any of our strategic goals towards multimodal transport or a connected Greenway system for all to use and enjoy. As far as affordable housing goes, there is none here.
Thank you.
So there's more to be said, but thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. I have a couple of announcements to make. November 15th at 8:30 a.m.
Counsel that.
Actually, we've...
You can counsel that.
We've canceled that meeting. November 19th at 3:00 p.m., the Commissioners will have their pre-meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326, in downtown Asheville. That same day at 5:00 p.m., Commissioners will hold... No, I'm sorry. Same day, 5:00 p.m., we'll have our regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326. We do have a closed session. Ms. Hockaday, can you talk about the purpose?
Yes, I believe you have two matters to consider related to economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We do not anticipate taking any action on any items that will be discussed in the closed session. When we come back from the closed session, we will plan to adjourn.